The time is 6:04 and at this time, we're going to be holding a public hearing. And I'm going to let the superintendent, Mr. Fernando Castillo, go ahead and get us started with that.
Mr. President, trustees, good afternoon or good evening. Members of the audience, good evening as well. My colleagues, good evening. We do have, as noted on the agenda, a public hearing. And topic to be discussed is very specific. It says, "Public hearing regarding proposed increase to hourly rate for DISD bus drivers in accordance with House Bill 483 and Texas Local Government Code, Section 180.007(c)." And, Mr. President, trustees, the logic behind this is, obviously, that we're talking about and we met, is that effective June 14th, we had, there's a House Bill 43 that is in existence, and it was on June 14th, 2013, where any time any school district is considering a pay increase, what they refer to as mid-year, there has to be such a thing known as a public hearing. And there's four items that need to be discussed in this particular matter. The first one is going to be the logic behind the ration, or rather rationale, logic behind what it is that we're proposing and why. The next, the next one is going to be exactly what is it that we're looking at on the increment, the proposed increase. And in our case, we're also going to have a, an additional bullet that we want to discuss, and that's going to be amending the current compensation plan to address the beginning salary for a bus driver coming to the district. And lastly, will be a bullet that has to do with where's the funding coming from. And in this case, being that it's a public hearing, this is why we have to address this in this manner. And what we need to, to let the audience know, the public, is, first of all, what's the rationale? Why are we looking at doing something like this? And so, in meeting, in meeting with the, with Transportation Department, Mr. President, trustees, it was noted, currently, our beginning salary for a bus driver is at $12 an hour. Some of our neighboring school districts, we are under. Our neighboring to our, to our east is at $12.68, that's West Lookham. Our neighboring to our west, PSJ, they are at $13.55, starting. And our neighboring to northwest, Edinburgh DISD, they are at $13.25, beginning, okay? Our current, in Dona ISD, is at $12 an hour, Mr. President, trustees, members of the audience. Our district, now again, let me do my, my dialogue into, we're in the part of the rationale as to why we feel that as a district, it is something that we really want to consider. Our district has 89.3 square miles, in terms of students that we pick up. We have 14,778 students effective today. Our, our peak is expected to be at 15,000, possibly 600, 15,600. Seventy-eight percent minimum of our students depend on transportation, being the buses to go from home to school, from school to home, and also to extracurricular activities, which is before, usually on, on weekends or after school. And so, in general, we have 29 bus drivers that we consider year-round. And just so we know the difference between year-round and, and full-time, 190, year-round basically means that our employees are the ones that work all year, they, they qualify for two weeks vacations, and we have 29 of those individuals. They work 259 days. They're the ones that are assured 40 hours per week, they're assured that. Also, we have 86, currently, we have 86 bus drivers that we refer to as the 190 days, okay? These students are, rather, these bus drivers are the 190 days that are assured minimum 30 hours, okay? And the, the fact of the matter is that we have a total of 115 bus drivers that we can safely say will be riding, or rather, driving a bus from home to school or from school to home. Inclusive of the, of both them, you have 115, and like I mentioned, you have the 259 days and the 190 days. We also have a total of 18 monitors that, that are, four, four monitors are considered at 259, a year, 40 hours. And then, we have 14 that are considered the 190. And these monitors are, are usually the ones that are in the special needs buses for assistance, okay? Right now, trustees, we had a very, very genuine conversation that I feel is something that's important to share. Our, our bus drivers, our men and women that are bus drivers right now, have a job that is very, very unique, and as one is very, very important to our school district. It is something that, a day like today, you have adverse weather that we may or may not have all the time. And I know that our bus drivers are thoroughly trained, and they continue to, to go through training, we just had a training this past week, what I refer to in the Red Square Day. But, the point to be made here is that they will carry students anywhere from the pre-K to the senior grade level, and when they have a full load, you're talking anywhere from 54 high school kids, because even though it might be a 74, 77 passenger bus, high school kids do not fit sitting down in, in that capacity. So nevertheless, it, it is a full bus, okay? The bus driver, he or she may be with their fully cognizant safety precautions at all times, and it's unfortunate, sometimes it's the other driver that will be the one causing the accident. And, and of course, not to mention that we do have some individual students that, being objective about this, may not behave in the best behavior. And so, the bus driver, he or she, is going to have to be taking some action to, to try to deter that behavior, and still get the other students home safely until they get back to the office and do a, a specific referral to address those matters. So, nevertheless, trustees, we do have something here that I feel is, is a very unique situation. Number one, we'd like to, this is the reason why we're entertaining this proposed increase to our bus drivers, simply because they deserve it. They deserve it. And, and like I said, it is not like the old days, and, and we don't want to go back to the old days. The old days, when you were driving, the bus driver had full authority, pull over, open the door, and say, "Get off." And you got off, and you walked home. How you got home is up to you. Obviously, we don't practice that anymore. So, nevertheless, we can tell the parents that driving is a, going on the buses is a privilege, not a right, but it's still, you still have to go through the entire due process. I just finished dealing with a parent from a particular elementary that was adamant that, you know, the, the student should not have been suspended from the bus and so forth, yet it was a student's third referral, and the student had gotten to a fight, causing other students to be bouncing back and forth. Again, the safety is jeopardized, because whether one of those students lands in the back of the driver while he or she's driving, and then the steering wheel goes in, in an opposite direction. So, these are, these are things that are important for us to know. So, that is the rationale, Mr. President, trustees, and members of the audience, as to why we are looking and, and really supporting our bus drivers at this point in time for a pay increase. And, and going into the next bullet, in terms of how much are we talking about? The current bus drivers that we mentioned, that are bus drivers right now, we're looking at giving, or proposing a $1 hourly rate increase across the board. So, if they're at $14.95, they would be at $15.95. If they're at $12.60, they would be $13.60. And you do the math from there. So, we're looking at that for, for those individuals that I mentioned, the 29 drivers, and the 86, which would be a total of 115 bus drivers. And that would be effective for the ones that we have right now, okay? Any, any discussion on that, Mr. President, trustees?
I have a question. Why do we have 259 days bus drivers? How many days are the kids in school?
The students are in school right now 168.
168 days.
Prior to House Bill 2610, it was 180 days. And so, now we're going by minutes, and so the minutes have to be equivalent to...
But they have activities, right, during the summer? There's summer school, they still have to...
Right. We, we have summer school, and we also...
And they have activities, and then the sports start early, and...
Right. And just to continue to, to add to, to that response to the question, the 259, which referred to the year-round, this is not, their title's not just bus driver, they also have other titles, they're mechanics, they're the tire repairs, and they work in the shop. So, in essence, that's why the number is much lower, because they also have to maintain the shop year-round. And the other individuals are still be, being at 190, the bus drivers that we refer to. And so, that's the reason why we have 20, the 259 days. And we do that to be consistent as well with the maintenance and custodial staff.
Any other questions from anybody in the audience, or anybody on the board?
Okay. Can I say something? I know that this issue has been addressed to us since, I think, we came on board in November, and I know that one of the first conversations I had with Mr. Solis a while back was that we needed to address the shortage of bus drivers, because that, that, at the, at the end of the, at the end of the day, that's one of the reasons why we're here, is because we have a shortage of bus drivers. There's more, there's more routes, there's more activities, there's more things that that are out there that need to be done, and not enough drivers. And as a result, Mr. Solis has mentioned to me, you know, he's got to pull his mechanics, he's got to pull his auxiliary staff that are out there, everybody has a CDL license, they're bus drivers, you know? So, that's one of the things that has been addressed to, to several of the board members on a individual basis, from Mr. Solis. I know that I asked him, years, you know, back in December, January, I said, "Mr. Solis, you know, we need to come up with a solution, we need to come up with a game plan on how we're going to address this issue." You know, and unfortunately, when the budget time came around, there was not a, issue brought to us of concern. And at that time, due to budget restraints, we chose not to give anybody a raise. And that's district-wide, okay? District-wide, no one got a raise. I think that maybe at that time, this issue should have been addressed, the concern that we're possibly losing drivers to some of the other districts due to the higher pay, you know? And I think we've already lost several employees to some of the other school districts, surrounding school districts, because of the issue of higher pay. But, you know, at this point in time, I know that the major concern, because I've talked to several bus drivers, and they've all said, you know, "Hey, we're, you know, we have these concerns, you know, we want to address them." And I think it was about two, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, Mr. Castillo, we, we just started the dialogue between Mr. Castillo and several of the board members. And at that point in time, we asked Mr. Castillo to come up with a solution, how we were going to be able to, to resolve this issue, you know? And this is the, the proposal that was brought up to us, and, you know, in keeping with the state, state and H.Bill 483, and then the local section 180.007, that's why we're having this, this hearing, to just make everything legal, okay? Because it's, it's hard to come in, otherwise, we're going to be, other, other employees are going to come say, "Well, we need a raise too." And in this case, like Mr. Castillo did mention, these employees are the ones that keep the district moving. They're the ones that make sure our kids get to class on time, they get to their, to their, to their activities, football games, basketball games, track meets, you know, all the things that, that happen behind the scenes, you know? And these are the, the people that get up here at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock in the morning to get on a route, go and do their route, come back and do other stuff, and, like I said, and, and one of the unique things that I think that, that people have to take into consideration is, yeah, we're short on bus drivers. Why? Because it takes a CDL, a commercial driver's license, you know? Otherwise, anybody could be a bus driver. But these people are trained, they, they pass certain tests, and those are the things that, that make, make them unique. And at this point, I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, we're, we're having this issue today, is that we don't have bus drivers knocking on our doors. I think last month, we only approved two new drivers to the district, you know? So, hopefully, by making this slight adjustment, and, you know, I, I, to me, it's a slight adjustment to your salaries, you know? Will make a difference in making us competitive with market rates, and that's another issue, you know? We've got to be competitive with market rates. Those of you who have studied, and Mr. Castillo made a, alluded to the fact that we were one of the lowest-paid districts as far as the drivers, now we're going to be competitive, you know? Maybe now, people will want to come to Donna, I mean, it's a, you know, make us a little bit more attractive, so. Anyway, that's my opinion, and, you know, I just want to go on record as, like I said, that we've been behind you guys, you know, it's just a, that, it's just never come to this point that we really wanted to address it. So, anyway, thank you for giving me the time to speak, okay?
Is there anybody else that has anything to add?
How many current openings do we have? Like, what's our ideal, and then how many are, like, vacancies do we have?
In terms of the drivers? We have, we're going to bring to you a report that we've hired seven bus drivers.
And does, will that give us kind of like, are we at our full head count at that point? Or how many, ideally, how many do we need to have, and then how many do we currently have?
Okay. Right. The number that I gave you is 115 with CDL. Now, as we mentioned earlier, those 29, they're doing duties beyond their, their original hire, but obviously, because of the CDL. So, Mr. Solis, I don't know if you have that number, if we were to, if I'm understanding the question, if we were to keep these 29...
What is the ideal, yeah, what's the ideal number of total? Mr. Castillo said currently 115.
Right.
Are we looking to hire, to have a total staff number of bus drivers of 120, 135? How big, how, what's the gap between where we are and where we need to be?
Thank you very much, first and foremost, board members, all of you board members, Mr. Castillo. First and fir-, first and foremost, first, I'd like to say, thank you for entertaining this. As you can see, I still have a lot of bus drivers in the back. I'm very proud of each and every one of them, and it's something that unfortunately needed to be brought up. But there again, I want to say, thank you, thank you very much for you all to even entertain this. Getting to your question, ma'am. The question would be ideal if we had 15 more drivers than we have currently right now.
So about 130.
That's correct. And the reason we have this is because the way our system is set up, our department is set up, run by bus drivers, the whole department. It's not just bus drivers drive the bus. Bus drivers do the operations of transportation. The way the system was set up, unfortunately, it was set up in a way that our staff members, and I'm going to tell you something, these individuals find their skills within themselves to be able to do extra work to keep our operations operational. They actually go and make efforts to help out and learn from each other. I'm going to say this, even today, we have a bus down, breaks down, or got stuck in the mud, and what does another bus driver do? I'm on my way to help you out. You have kids, I'm on my way. These, they're unsung heroes, is what I say. These individuals work very, very hard every day. Now, getting to the maximum point of saying, "Whew, we've got a relief valve," I would say we would need a total of 15 new drivers to be able to support a transportation department, to be able to run efficiently, and have each driver run a route correctly. What do I mean by correctly? Each driver runs a route, an elementary route, after an elementary route, they go to a junior high route, and after a junior high route, they go to a high school. The high school and junior high are put, combined together to do that as a route. The elementary route is one. But I have 15 other drivers that do double elementary routes. That means they go to the elementary, they pick up, drop off, and they got to go back because they got too many students for their route. They also do that in the evenings. The evenings, believe it or not, you have more capacity on our buses in the afternoons than you have in the mornings. Every bus driver's here can actually agree with me, because a lot of the moms and dads drop their children off at school, but they all get on the bus in the afternoon. See, so, we're looking about flexibility, okay? Each one of these bus drivers, they actually do that part and more. We have, we have a, an issue pertaining to field trips, in the middle of a field trip. These drivers put themselves underneath a lot of stress, why? Because since we don't have those extra drivers to do field trips, you know what these ladies and gentlemen do? They pick up an elementary route, they drop off the elementary students, go to a campus, maybe a junior high, pick up the basketball team, volleyball team, take them to West Lookham, Ed Couch, they come back, then they pick up their secondary route. Now, each one of those drivers that are doing that, you know, they're feeling pressured that, "I got to get back to pick up the secondary route, because moms are calling, 'Hey, where's our kids? It's already 5:15, they haven't been picked up.'" But this is what I'm talking about, is that each one of these drivers that are out there, they find a way to make it happen. You know, they, they ask me, "Mr. Solis, you've been there for almost two and a half years. What did you see that really made a difference in Dona ISD?" So, you know what? They make it happen. They make sure every kid gets picked up, they make sure every kid gets home safe, and that's one thing I've ever told, I've always told my drivers. Your job is for you to get up and get home safe. That's for your family, and that's where it starts. You do this for them. But in the same turn, when you get every child, and you pick them up, and you get them to school and back home, thank you. How often do I say that to you guys?
So you do, so it's like folks are doing kind of double duty, two routes, double time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then my last question was, so, the budget for this fiscal year, we approved about 4.4 million for payroll costs for student transportation. What is the difference now in what we anticipate we'll need to spend on payroll costs for, given this, this dollar increase?
We're going to cover that in, here in the last bullet with Ms....
Okay, cool. Great. That's my only other question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Question, question from the audience?
I'd like to ask you a few questions. Again, like Mr. Solis said, thank you for entertaining this meeting, for the bus drivers. Bus drivers always get a bad rep, because the bus hasn't been here, and where's the bus? And, you know, we hear it, as a secretary, I go in at 8:00 in the morning, and those are all going to get some morning from parents. The buses pass by, or the bus stops to pass by, and, but, we need to understand, people are the first and the last ones that clean up on the way to base. And so, are my one bus driver still from, budget? Budget? I've never really been involved with a bus driver, and I am now, at, I'm at a women's school. And that first year that I went there, I started in March, and then, so my first year, my boss decided that she wanted us to see where our kids are from, so she booked, she planned a field trip for us. And so, we went to the Colonia's to see where our children live. So she was our driver. Let me tell you why it's so important about a bus driver. She knew where every child lived. She knew who, how many kids they had, how many siblings they had, and who was coming up. And I had the occasion to find out who her students are. Another thing is that she took us through the levees, because we have children on the other side, the levees on the other side of the border wall. And when she was backing up on that, I thought it was going to, you know, to bore. And I'm like, "Ah, nope, no, no, she had it, she had it." But can you imagine them doing that, like, in good weather, when it's raining, and it's mudding, it's livery? The talent that they have, and for them not to be appreciated? You know, we need to make sure, you know, earlier, some people were mentioning about how we don't have, you know, mechanics. We need to invest in our employees and make sure that they get the training that they need, so that they can be able to serve our students. Because again, as I always say, without our students, we would not have our job. They're our precious resource. They carry our precious resources, our children, day in and day out. So, just good for thoughts, you know, start thinking about making sure that they get a little bit more training, so they can be able to do their jobs. I mean, I think we all do an excellent job already, but if something's not being done, then you know what? That's what I've been pushing, I've been having conversations with Mr. Castillo, that we need to bring training for our current professionals. You know, we only concentrate on the, on the teachers, you know, as part of this classroom training, but what about their training? What about our training, so we can be able to do our job efficiently?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to mention, ask this question. Like Mrs. Estrada mentioned, training and mechanics, and we're in the year 2017, why don't we have these mechanics on hand? Why are we asking for this money now? Why, why wasn't this brought up during the budget process, in order to be able to fund this? I understand that this House bill is a proposal, and eventually, we're going to have to meet , meet its criteria. But why now? Why didn't you start this in the beginning, prior? It's my concern is, okay, you're going to tell us how we're going to pay for it, but why aren't we talking about this now? This should have already been discussed long ago.
I think the, the only thing that, that is, is on the agenda right now is the $1 raise for the bus drivers.
Correct.
On the agenda, we have nothing there as far as the, as the mechanics and stuff, and we can address that with the superintendent, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion and a, a, a way to fix it.
Absolutely, we have to fix it, but it just bothers me that...
Again, it's not on the agenda.
Correct. And, and you're asking for comment, and I'm going to say, gosh darn it, now we're forced to have to deal with this, when this should have been taken care of years ago.
You're correct.
But now it falls on our, on our lap? I have no problem working at it, but it's not up to the board to figure this out.
Okay. Mr. Solis, question for you. Why is it that all of a sudden, you need 15 more drivers?
15 more drivers would be the addition of the seven that we're lacking currently, plus another eight to be able to fulfill all the extra routes that we're having right now. During our field trip time, sir, is when we're most needed. Everybody is being dispersed to do routes and help out carrying trips. There's times we have up to 40 trips in one day. We haven't gotten to the heavy trip season yet. That's in February and March. That's when all the sports...
Yeah, my point is that, that this should have been brought up, and it should have been a non-negotiable on your part. You should have said, "I cannot function like this." And, and accepting the budget as it was, who were passing the budget, you didn't stand up and say, "Savasquez, this is not enough, I need 200,000, 300,000 more to make it work." You didn't do that.
Sir, I have, I, I do follow the chain of command. I do bring these items up. In fact, I was even part of the committee here with the budget committee.
And you brought those up to the superintendent?
It had been discussed with also the...
The question was, did you bring those up to the superintendent, or to the HR?
The superintendent, no, I bring, I bring it up to my boss, who is Ms. Velma Rangel, and then I also brought it up to Ms. Sandy, and also, prior to Ms. Sandy Martinez, I brought it up to Ms. Valdez. These discussions were an open discussion, talking about the needs of our department...
There's no way you could have brought that up to Ms. Valdez, Ms. Valdez was not here.
Well, no, sir. I mean, this is even prior, this is even...
This is now, this is this, this budget season.
Okay, this budget season, I had spoken to Ms. Sandy Martinez, I also spoke into my boss, Ms. Velma Rangel.
Okay. Did you all, did you all relay that message to the superintendent?
It's been discussed.
In demand?
Well, there's 139 in the budget, it's allocated for 139 head counts.
We actually left the PCNs for transportation open. We didn't close them, because we knew there was a need.
Correct.
So when we're doing, working on the budget, we left, we didn't close...
So it is in his budget?
It's in, it's in the, yes, it's in our budget for additional transportation employees.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
139 drivers, sir?
139 is the head count for bus aid, bus driver, full-time.
We had actually discussed it with Javier Villanueva, when he was there.
That is correct. Now, I did bring this up, and they did allot some PCNs. Now, how the PCNs work, the PCNs work out of the business office, I don't have control of the PCNs, meaning they say, "Okay, these are open, so if I, as long as I can fulfill them, they can, they can be addressed." Now, how that part of the budget works, I went in there, and I did speak to them, talk to them of the needs, sir. I, I don't ever quit, sir. I don't ever quit.
Mr. Solis, several times, I think I've talked to you, and I asked you for a plan of action.
Uh, several times, I think I've talked to you and I asked you for a plan of action. How are you going to attract new drivers? And, uh, I, I've seen a sign, it's over at the Todd, on the Channing fence at Todd. And, you know, that's pretty much it. You know, I haven't seen, you know, I told you, you know, when I spoke, I, I said, you know, contact, uh, STC and, and Westlaco, see if they can have, uh, drivers, uh, see if you can contact, you know, some of these other driving schools that are, are teaching, potential truck drivers and stuff, to offer a course. Uh, you know, those are all, uh, have been, I, I mean, those are ideas that I, I, and I, I talked to you about.
That's correct.
I have yet to see the implementation of any of those, you know, ideas, you know, put into a plan of action, you know?
Let, let me go ahead and elaborate a little bit on that. I met with MET. MET is affiliated with, uh, STC. They're a migrant educational training center. But in fact, uh, we even have one of our drivers here that belongs to that. In fact, I'm, I'm in the process of hiring another. Um, one of the issues with all these training centers is that I also met with McAllen Careers, and we were trying to put a program together. One of the problems, if we even go into an MOU, there is nothing holding a driver from moving to another district because there's no contractual between a district and a driver. So even though we were to put a program together and train these drivers, there's nothing to say that that driver can't turn around tomorrow and go work for another school district. What I didn't want to do is put a plan in training people that I don't get them to understand the Don ISD life. So what I did do is that I have drivers that are here that are what we call sub-monitors. They may have a CDL license. They come in. They have to have passed their Department of Public Safety's book. That way they get a driving permit. Underneath that driving permit, they all get a certificate for testing on a driving test. For that next four to six weeks, those drivers are trained in-house. Last year, we brought in about six of them. Two of them passed, four of them didn't. The restrictions on the testing has really gone up. Now, the federal testing is in English only. The 100-point check is in English. A lot of the people who had been applying, English was not their strong suit. So underneath that, to be putting an investment into our district that I can't hold those drivers to staying in Donna because they have a right to go and get employed anywhere they would like based on pay, it was very difficult. And I spoke to them, to both of them, they said, we can train them, sir, but we're not gonna guarantee you they're gonna stay there. And I can't guarantee you that because there is no contractual of each individual because they don't have a Chapter 21 contract. And they would be considered an at-will. So, yes, have I tried different avenues? Definitely, sir. Have I, and I can bring those representatives and speak with you. Uh, the other thing is, is that I'm doing an in-house training. In fact, I just had, uh, two new drivers trained by us that passed the exam. I have two more that are, already been, uh, in the system. The good thing about my program, sir, is that they get to know the kids already. They get to know their coworkers. They get to understand the new environment that I've developed in that department. The development of this process that I have, it's them. They're the ones that have the environment the way it is. I tell them, I work for you. This is your department. Make it the best. Have we made some changes, ladies and gentlemen, in our department for you all? Have we done some things that make you more comfortable in your work environment? Is everything perfect? No. But am I working on it?
Mr. Solis, I think we need to move on to the next bullet. We're gonna be here all night.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much for your attention tonight.
Keep it down, please. Let us continue, uh, with the fourth bullet, I believe.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, trustees, members of the audience. In terms of the fourth bullet, this is where Ms. Martinez, uh, in the business office will tell us with regard to the funding.
Uh, yes, sir, members of the board and community members. We have, uh, looked through our budget and we've identified, uh, some areas where we can actually move the money to cover the fringe benefits as well as the increase in the pay. So that amount has been secured in our budget.
It's local, correct?
Yes, sir, it's local funds.
And what's the total difference, though?
175,000, including the fringe.
Okay, so in addition to what we, the, what we allocated, the, uh, 4.4 million, it'd be plus another 175,000. Okay. And that would be, uh, the $1 raise for all the 115 folks for the course of this year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
From here on.
Yes, and, and, well, yeah.
Can we afford another 15 or another seven that y'all want to bring on board?
Oh, those PCNs have been secured and the funding will be there for them.
And those were used in the calculations, right?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions from anybody?
Just to add one more, and this will take effect when?
This is, uh-
If, if approved?
As we mentioned, when, when we get down to the actual action items, this will be, begin October the 16th, which is a Monday. Okay, today's October the 10th, we have to finish this week. And if the trustees approve when we get to the actual regular board items, which will be consisting of HR1, HR2, and HR3, it will begin effective October the 16th, 2017.
Any other questions? Okay, this concludes the, uh, the open hearing, and I'd like to thank all of you bus drivers for everything you do. And, yes, sir?
Can I say something?
You may.
First of all, thank you for, uh, letting us speak. Uh, I've been a bus driver since 1993. I drove semis for three years. I've seen a lot of drivers come and go.
Sure, what, what's your name?
Israel Garza.
Israel Garza?
Israel. I've seen a lot of bus drivers come and go because of the pay. Underpaid, they go elsewhere. They come here, they get their CDL, they take their training, somebody offers them $2 more, they'll go over there. Okay, uh, the state has a lot of requirements. You have to have a CDL. You have to pass a physical every year. You have to take 20 hours Region 1 training. Uh, you have to, uh, what's my list? I'm sorry. I'm a little bit nervous here. Okay, you have to have an endorsement, passenger endorsement for passengers, S endorsement for school bus driver, DOT every year, Department of Public Safety, clean driving record. Uh, and we're on 10 points. Once you have a CDL, you have 10 points. You have an accident, you get one or two taken away. By the time you get four points, the insurance doesn't want you anymore because you're a high risk. So we take care of our license 24/7, 365 days out of the year. So we're always trying to be professional. We might have a little fender bender, it might affect us. So that's what we don't want. But yeah, we have to have these credentials that the state, states, the state wants, wants the district to have these credentials so that we can drive. So the state keeps an eye on us and they monitor our tickets and everything. So, in my opinion, you know, we should be bumped up to what other districts are paying because we're doing the same job. And I don't wanna be a job hopper moving everywhere around. I wanna see if this works. Some drivers that had come aboard from other districts have quit because they come in, other districts send paperwork and all that information, and they don't get the years of service. They never get bumped up. It stays frozen for a while. It took me a whole year to get, to get bumped up. I lost a whole year. You never, I don't know what's going on, uh, over there at HR, but I lost a whole year of pay. I never did get bumped up. And, uh, I'm here to stay. I enjoy working here. Thank you, Mr. Solis, coworkers. Um, we help each other out all the time, and, uh, that's just the reason why we're here. We need to be bumped up to what the other districts are paying. And, uh, you can train 100 drivers, and if you don't bump up the pay, they're gonna look for elsewhere, gonna go elsewhere. So, thank you. Laurita? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, again, this concludes the open hearing. Do we include that?
Yes, sir.
And now-
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna go on to the, uh, regular board meeting. So I need to call this meeting to order, and please join us in the pledge in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and free to be just as for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I wanna make it very clear, though, on the bus drivers, that wasn't the open forum. Open forum is yet to come up, so if you were planning to speak on open forum, we're not there yet. This was just a special, um, meeting we had. Your turn has not been up yet, so don't leave.
All right, uh, any changes to the agenda, sir?
Mr. President, trustees, I would like to have one, actually, there's two changes. Uh, Mr. Pavi Arriel, our county tax assessor, is here present with us, and he does have a, a previous commitment. Uh, with your approval, I'd like to see if we can bump his presentation up from BF2 to number one under superintendent's report. If you're okay with that, then he certainly would appreciate it.
You're okay?
Everybody okay with that? Anybody opposed to that?
And then the last one, I, I need to make a clarification here. Under BF9, trustees, BF9, I just wanna make sure for the record that, uh, when you read that, when we get to that discussion, possible action to request for proposals, RFP, uh, for lawn care for Salazar, Muñoz, Singletary, and Adame, please strike out Salazar. That was a typo, that should be Garza Elementary. Garza Elementary. And other than that, that's all I've got, Mr. President, trustees.
Is that all right?
Um, we, we can't add to it. We can remove. We could remove, we could remove Salazar, but we can't add, add to an item.
Strike that.
Then we're gonna have to strike the whole. Yeah, take the whole thing off.
Yeah, BF2.
And we'll get there in March.
Yeah, BF2 to number one.
All right, under board recognition?
Mr. President, trustees, under board recognition, we have recognition of campuses with a student attendance rate of 97%. That's for the secondary schools, and 98% during the first six weeks period of the 2017 to 2018 school year. To make that presentation, we have Director of Intake, Ms. Lily Gonzalez-Lugo.
All right.
My reminder.
Crazy, you're not present.
Okay, taking that presentation will be Ms. Velma Rangel, making that presentation.
Oh, she's coming.
Oh, there she is.
You're up.
You're up, Ms. Lugo.
Good afternoon. Sorry about that, I didn't know I was presenting. Uh, today we're presenting our elementary and middle schools who met the district goal of 98% attendance for elementary and 97% for, uh, secondary middle schools. Um, first place in elementary goes to M. Rivas Elementary with a 98.29% attendance. Second place, uh, for, with a 98.18% attendance goes to Stanky Elementary. Third place with 98.08 attendance rate goes to Salinas Elementary. And fourth place for, uh, with a 98% attendance goes to Salazar Elementary, Ms. Letizia Chavez, principal. Okay, for middle schools, first place goes to WA Todd with a 97.61%. Second place goes to AP Solis with 97.35% attendance rate. Third place goes to South Seda Middle School with a 97.25%. And fourth place goes to Veterans Middle School with 97.16%. I do wanna add that all middle schools met the, the district goal of 97%, so way to go, guys. Great job. Great job, elementary's.
Where, so is it the high school now, I mean, the nice 100%?
Okay, we got a whole, uh, a whole bunch of people that are, that are signed up for, that are signed up for, uh, open forum. I got Linda Estrella, and then I got Raquel Martinez, Israel Garza. Okay, if all of you are, are on the same topic, you need to delegate somebody to do the, the speaking on your behalf, probably. If it's all about the race, if it's complaints about a department or whatever else it is, if it's the same thing, we don't, we don't need for 15 people to come over here and tell us the same thing over and over again. So, um, I would like maybe, um, I wanna say three to speak on behalf of the, of the, of the, the bus drivers. And Ms. Estrella's talking about, and you're first, about NEA report and bullying, right? So-
NEA?
You're, you're on. We're gonna give you about three minutes because we got an army.
Really quick. So, um, just to let you know that, oh, I'm sorry, Linda Estrada, good, uh, good evening. You said fast, so let's go fast. Um, any, uh, TSA, Donna TSA, any, any president for the local, uh, here in Donna? Uh, just to let you know, I just got back from DC on Sunday where I went and did my lobbying on Thursday. And we did lobby against, uh, uh, for the Dream Act, a clean, uh, Dream Act for our DACA students.
Thank you for doing that.
Um, we also, um, lobbied, uh, for the reauthorization of the child, of children's health insurance program, which is a CHIP, uh, to invest in public education and raise the budget caps. And, um, so those were the basically, basic, uh, three that we concentrated on. Uh, sometimes it's not, um, not added on this, but, Mr. Gerro, don't worry, we always talk about the social security. We always make sure, we always talk about that, okay?
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, that's one of the things that I will always bring up, even though it's not part of our agenda. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to talk about is bullying. Um, this is a conversation that I've been having with Mr. Castillo. Um, I tried having it with the past, um, superintendent, and, uh, it was like it would fall on deaf ears. Um, and when I talk about- And when I talk about bullying, there's so much type of bullying there. You've got bullying student to student. You've got employee to employee. You've got employee to student, and student to employee. I mean, there's a lot of bullying, you know, examples that are going on. And so one of the things that I wanted to do is that NEA does have a bullying session that they can come and do for free. And I have already talked to Mr. Solis with transportation. We do want to start with our bus drivers, being that they're, they're the first ones that see our kids, and they'll be able to catch when there's some bullying going on. And so we want to equip them and, and get them prepared for that, to hopefully make their job easier, and hopefully we have fewer referrals. At the same time, you know, I was, I was supposed to bring this up last month, but there were so many celebrations that I didn't want to be a Debbie Downer and, and just bring this up. And so I really do regret not bringing it up last month, because shortly after that, we had the shooting in, in Washington. And the person who did the shooting was teaching a bully, a lesson. So what is it going to take for this district to wake up? Is it gonna, are we gonna be proactive? Or are you gonna be reactive? And then along the lines, my grandson, he's biracial, and he was being bullied. He was being bullied. He was being called a brownie. And so we've always taught him not to be disrespectful, and should just go make sure you report, don't get into trouble. But I don't know where he gets this talkative tough stuff from, because he talks a lot, but don't know where he gets it from. But he did report it, and so when he reported it, the teacher, instead of dealing with it, did the same thing. And so the whole class started laughing. And so at the end of the day, he went and told the teacher, "Thank you. You just made it so much easier for these kids to continue bullying me." And so when he told my daughter, his only concern was, "I spoke back to a teacher." Not the fact of what was done to him, but that he was, he thought he had been disrespectful. I do commend, commend Mr. Castillo and the campus for taking care of it immediately. I'm not here to point fingers. I'm not here, I'm, I'm here to try and work things. Oh, my gosh, here I am, you know, advocating for students across the United States, and I can't even take care of my own grandchild. My own district. We need to open up our eyes, guys. We need to open up our eyes. So I do thank Mr. Solis, that he is going to allow us to have this training for the bus drivers at the next planning session in November. It's free, guys. I keep telling you, guys, we're, we're a resource for free stuff, you know? And so if it's something that we can help our employees to help our students, and, and for us to become a better district, and, and let's not think about the negative. The only reason I told that story is because I wanted to sink in on how real it is. You know, a lot of us kind of just like want to push it by the wayside. But in talking to a lot of our parents.
10 seconds.
10 seconds. Talking to a lot of our parents, that's why a lot of our kids leave, because of the bullying. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Can anybody want to speak on behalf of the bus drivers, bus department? I'm gonna let the bus driver speak first. We'll let you close up the show.
My name is Daniel Villarreal.
How you doing, sir? Good evening?
I just want to say, I was working at Donna for a while, and I quit because of the pay. Because another company gave me more pay. Decided to come back to Donna, because I do like working in Donna. I like all the bus drivers. We are like a family. So, I went to the humans, human, and when I, they told me my pay, it was $3.25 less. That's what I was getting. So I went to Mr. Solis, and the way he spoke to me, the way he presented to me, he was very professional. And that was, and I saw a lot of changes. So I decided to get that cut on my pay to come to Donna. With this, I'm saying that there are a lot of drivers that are not too happy, but we're still here. That's the point. People don't see what we go through, because they have never been bus drivers. They don't know what a bus driver goes through. Yet, we're here. They, they've been here. I left, but they, a lot of drivers are still here. And I appreciate y'all considering our job. And like I said, I took, I took a cut pay on my check to be here with Donna. In three months, four months, in that company, well, I will not mention their, their, their name. Three months, I make $11,000 to $12,000 in three months and a half. I dropped that off to be here. So I really appreciate if y'all would consider all the bus drivers in Donna. We go through a lot, and it's very easy to people to point and say, "The bus drivers." They're not bus drivers, and they don't know what we go through. And now there's a lot of schools that have called me, asking me to go to their district. More pay. More pay. But I stick with Donna, and I hope Donna can stick with us, the bus drivers. Thank you.
Is there any other bus drivers that, that want to speak at this time? Okay, Raquel, go ahead. Thank you.
My first question is, okay, let's go back to three years ago. How many bus drivers quit? That should have been somebody's homework. In 2015, we had this many, this many quit. In 2016, we had this many, and this year, we had this many, and this many have quit. What is the underlying problem for them quitting? It, it goes back to the same with the children. They never ask why. The staff doesn't ask, "Why are you quitting?" Is it because of the pay? Are you having a hard time at work? Are you being bullied? Is there something going on? Is there some underlying cause why you're leaving? Because let me tell you, at $12 an hour, that's a good pay for the Valley. Yes, other districts are paying more, but that's a good pay. Because, no, 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 you look at the custodians, they don't get $12.
Let her speak, please.
Okay, see, so, so at $12 an hour, that's good pay. And then their overtime is really good, and that's my concern. Because I'll read to you what I was, I was given. We need, we have bus drivers, 40-hour year-round bus drivers, okay? And then they still hire part-time bus drivers, on top of those 259 day-a-year people. That's why bus drivers leave, okay? Part-timers, as they are called, work 30 hours a week, 190 days, like a child nutrition and teachers. A previous CFO was on to this 10 years ago. He said the extra unnecessary time and overtime based on favoritism was well over 1 million in costs that we don't need. It was cheaper to contract out the repairs and maintenance after he discovered employees lied about justifying their summer duties and gave to him a daily record of what was going on. They had six guys changing brakes on the same bus for two weeks. It took five guys a whole week to power wash the building, the building exterior. Here we are 10 years later, and some full-time bus drivers are paid time and a, time and a half due to politics. And I dare anybody to say that's not true. Well, part-timers want those hours. That's why they leave. Now, justify paying somebody that's full-time, time and a half, where somebody that's time and a half, it's part-time, time and a half. There's a big difference. I'm getting $12. I get paid $6. That's, after my 40 hours, I've got time and a half. Whereas if I'm a part-timer, I don't get that time and a half as much as the, the regular timers do, okay? Now.
About 10 seconds.
Okay. There was a friend, there was a friend of ours that was working, who got shafted, I guess, for the bus transportation department. She had two degrees, but because of politics, she was passed by. So think about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that closes our, let me do a check. Is there anybody else that had anything different to talk about? Are we good? Okay, then that's it for the open forum. Thank you very much, and we'll continue with the superintendent's report.
Mr. President, trustees, as we mentioned earlier, prior to the meeting, we are going to address BF2 at this time. And that is the, let me read it. Discussion and possible action and approval of the annual tax collection report from Pablo Paul Villarreal Jr., tax assess, tax assessor-collector for fiscal year 2016-2017. And I know he's present here with us. So thank you for being here, Mr. Villarreal.
Thank you. It's an honor for me to be here. I could have sent my chief deputy or, or my other tax manager, but since I'm from Donna, this is where I come home, so. I'm originally from the Colonia Seca, if anybody knows where that's at. My parents still live there, okay? So when I, when I started, you know, working for the county and then became an elected official, but people said, you know, "Don't forget Donna." I can't. My parents live there, and I love the city and the school district. So if you, if you go to tab number one on the, under the annual report, I'm gonna just give you a brief, brief report on the collections from September 1st, 2016, through August 31st, 2017. The tax collections are, are broken down by base penalty and interest and attorney fees. It's, it's a combination of current taxes, delinquent taxes, and total, and rollback. So the total dispersed 2016-2017 to the Donna ISD was a total of $16,81,116.98. Under tab number two, under tab number two, under current collections to date. For 2015-2016, the base amount collected in that year was $13,4,121.47. For 2016-2017, the base amount was $13,909,382.59. We collected $905,261.12 above last year's collection. Last year's percentage of collections was 92.18. This year, percentage of collections is 92.09. So I think we're doing great for the district, 92.09, where the, the, the community, the taxpayers are coming out, working with us to, to make payments, or we're paying in full. The next page is the five-year comparison from 2012 through 2016. 2012, the percentage of collections was 90.46, 91.41, 92.23, 92.18, and 92.09. The next page is the, the pie chart, where it shows you the collections of 92.09, and the only thing that's outstanding out of 100 percent is 7.91. Okay, the next page, that's, that report belongs to the delinquent tax collections. So since, since they're not here, I'm just gonna give you a brief of that. The, also, the, the delinquent collections today, for last year, they collected $1,135,485.50. This year, their base amount was $996,339.84. Last year's percentage of collections was 96.73. This year's 24.31, so slightly a little bit short. If you go to the next page, also, they also have a five-year comparison. 25.08 in 2011, 25.57, 2013, 31.61, 2014, 26.73, and 2015, 24.31. So that pretty much concludes the report for my current collections, and of course, that's for the delinquent tax attorneys. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to. It took me a full year to, to collect these taxes, and I think I took care of it in five minutes, so. But I'm very pleased of my staff and, and also of the taxpayer from, from the, from the Donna School District, which is, you know.
How, how are we doing compared to other school districts as far as?
The percentages, I think, you know, we're doing great. 92.09 percent is great. Other bigger school districts, like McAllen, they're probably at about, maybe 96 percent. Maybe West Liquid's at about 93, 94. So overall, you know, I do collect for every school district in the whole county, and everybody that I've collected for right now, they're above 90 percent. We're doing good, and every year, we try, try harder, and we, by trying harder, is trying to go out there and tell the people that, that, you know, try to be on the news, try to be on the newspaper, on the radio, to let them know. Right now, the taxes will be going out. The current tax should be going out November 1st. So they have up to January 31st, 2018, to pay the, the base amount. So I always encourage everybody to, if they don't have the full amount, to go out there and make partial payments.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for anybody?
Thank you for moving me up.
Thank you, sir.
I gotta go to another meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we got possible actions?
Mr. President, trustees, this is an action item, so is, I want to read it. Discussion and possible action and approval of annual tax collection report from Pablo Paul Villarreal Jr., tax assessor-collector for fiscal year 2016-2017. As per the presentation, administration recommends approval.
Okay, is the motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Watts, a second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
Favor.
All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. President, trustees, we will now go back to our regular agenda and the order. Superintendent's report, we have item one, discussion and possible action on approval of the 2017-2018 District Improvement Plan and all campus improvement plans. For that, we've, we've got our Director of Valuation, Testing and Evaluation, Ms. Ofelia Alvarez, to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Board President, Board members, ladies and gentlemen. I am Ofelia Alvarez, the Director of Testing and Evaluations, and I'm here to present the 2017-2018 District Improvement Plans as well as the Campus Improvement Plans, and I'm going to be giving you an overview. All right, we will begin with our new vision statement, which is very new, and it's really, really wonderful. I really like it. The vision of Donna Independent School District is to be a bold district at the forefront of educating all students to be passionate, motivating leaders who will be a powerful force for positive change in our community, state, and nation. Hashtag be the change. The mission of Donna Independent School District is to provide a rigorous and supportive learning environment with meaningful and relevant learning experiences that inspire creativity, character development, and critical thinking that ensures educational excellence for all students. We have some core beliefs that are pending revision due to changing the vision and the mission at this time, so we are still pending those. And the purpose of the, the District Improvement Plan is to guide district and campus staff in the improvement of student performance for all student subgroups in order to attain state standards in respect to the student achievement indicators. The District Improvement Plan must include a comprehensive needs assessment, a measurable district performance objective for all appropriate student achievement and, and all student population, and strategies, of course, for improving student performance. We have four goals in this District Improvement Plan, which, goal number one will be, will create an inviting educational climate that enhances learning and performance for all students, so that they may excel in all areas of education and meet state and federal passing standards. We have nine objectives, and goal number one, which, objective from 1 through 9. Number one, instructional improvement to meet accountability measures. Two, bilingual ESL. Three, special education. Four, migrant. Five, career technology education. Six, fine arts. Seven, physical education. Eight, dropout prevention. And nine, advanced academics. On goal number two, we will, we have, will maintain a safe, orderly, and healthy school environment for all students, parents, and employees. Objectives 1 through 6. Number one, student support services. Number two, nutrition, food services, nursing, health services. Number three, for risk management. Number five, insurance. Number six, police department. On goal number three, will continue to follow sound fiscal and managerial practices to provide highly qualified staff, appropriate resources, technology, and well-maintained facilities to promote increased student achievement. Once again, objective 1 through 5, number one being business and finance. Two, testing and evaluations department. Three, federal programs. Four, human resources. And five, expenditures. On our last goal, goal number four, will collaborate with parents, community members, and staff to promote continued success for all students throughout an effective and advisory process. We have objective one, DL PAC. Number two, parental involvement department. Number two, parental involvement department. Once again, the purpose of the plan is to guide district and campus staff on the improvement of performance for all students. The, the district improvement plan provides the expectations and structure for campuses, includes long and short-term goals, measurable goals. They are reviewed in September, December, and March, which is the formative. And the summative comes in June. It includes Donna ISD vision goals and student performance. Along with this, we have the campus improvement plans, which are being guided by the district improvement plan, which in each, each school year, the principal of, of each school campus, with the assistance of the campus-level committee, of course, shall develop, review, and revise the campus improvement plans for the purpose of improvements, student performance for all student populations. What does this look like? It, we have, I created a little cycle here that, that we follow, which is the district, the district campus performance. We then analyze and evaluate, we analyze and data and yearly evaluate it at the end of the year. We begin the comprehensive needs assessment after that. We develop the DIP and CIP along with the implementation of such DIP and CIP. And the monitoring, supporting of the DIP and CIP is ongoing, and it, and then it goes back to this cycle. And this is all a cycle that we follow without, throughout the, the year. What do we include in the district improvement plans or the campus improvement plans? These are just examples of, of what we, what type of data we gather for elementary and secondary. As you can see, we have district, state, and other data that we, we acquire. We have the six-weeks test, benchmarks, report cards. For the state, we have the STAR, the TELPASS, PBMAS. And also, just on the, on probably the copy that you have, we have NICOB, No Child Left Behind. Now it is Every Student Succeeds Act. It, it came to that. We have other things that we, we consider, attendance data, discipline, reading levels, everything like that. And then on the secondary part, we have also the district, the state, and other. As you may see, we have a lot of data that we have to consider in order for us to look at our performance objectives and our long-term and, or short-term and long-term goals. Before this, in a nutshell, we know that the DIPs and CIPs, they are developed, reviewed, and revised every year. The plan supports state goals and objectives. The plan includes a comprehensive needs assessment every year. The plan includes strategies to improve student performance. The DL PAC and the CL PAC committees assist by supervising the education plans at the campus and the district level. They consist of teachers, professional staff, the committees, teachers, professional staff, parents, community members, business representative. And just a reminder that the DIPs and the CIPs are a working document, so they are ongoing. Where can we find this? This is just an overview. We can find it through the department, through the Donna ISD website, under departments, under testing. And then you will find the district improvement plans along with all of the campus improvement plans for all the, the campuses. If you have any questions at this time. We use a plan for learning software, and we PDF it so that we can have it on the website. And it is available for everybody to see.
Any questions from anybody up here?
Uh, no questions. Just wanna make a connection for us, um, to my, for my fellow board members. So, we went through a process, you know, of setting goals for ourselves as a board. And then, we just were in the last meeting of superintendent goals. These feed into that, and then those feed into the campus improvement plan.
Yes.
So, these really work in conjunction with each other.
Conjunction.
Which is also why we at the board level don't need to set goals for every single grade level because at the campus level, they're looking at the change. So, that's why these things really work hand in hand, informing each other. Just wanna make sure everybody was making that connection to where we were, kind of, with our goals in September.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Raina, for those comments. Mr. President and trustees, administration recommends approval.
Recommendation to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Avila, second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, under superintendent's report, discussion and possible action to approve the award of youth literacy grant in the amount of $2,000 to Lenore Elementary by the Dollar General Literacy Foundation for the 2017-18 school year. And you have in your packet a, a copy of the letter, and obviously a copy of the check. We bring this to you because it is a gift, but the gift, obviously, is going to the students, to the campus. And we do wanna commend Lenore for going out and seeking this particular, it, it's really a scholarship for them. They call it a grant. So, congratulations to Lenore Elementary. And we wanted to bring it to you as trustees because, obviously, it is a gift to the campus.
Who is Mr. Steven Montalvo?
I, I don't know the gentleman.
Is he a teacher, or?
I don't think he's one of our teachers.
We don't have anybody here from Lenore?
We just know that they've got $2,000 and are ready to spend it.
Just an action item?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Administration recommends approval.
He's a librarian? So, I just wanna commend Mr. Montalvo for going above and beyond and securing this, this grant, or scholarship.
Okay, uh, we have a recommendation to approve.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Avila, second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Number three, Mr. President and trustees, report only, progress of Donna ISD response to the forensic audit findings. That, that is a binder that you have, Mr. President and trustees. The rationale, this little binder that everybody handed you. I, I wanna be clear that we, we're not gonna be able to go through all this. My plan on this is for you to have it as, pretty much like it was presented to us initially, to, to review it, study. And what you have, you have tabs in there. The whole behind, the whole objective behind this, as trustees, was Donna ISD's reviewed it. We have responses, and we have a plan of action. For some of the items, as you well know, this is gonna be an ongoing process. But we try to give as much as we can thus far. Some of the things are in motion, let me give you an example of one, that, that we, we do have in, in motion. And that is the actual certification for every single employee that is considered a teacher slash administrator or counselor, so forth, from our district. We have the, the program that is Notice Teams, you're familiar with that. That was sent to ESPEC. ESPEC is the State Board of Education for Certification. And so, by doing that, using our, our program, they were able to download every single certification as it stands right now. So, now, we have it back in our district, and we're pending ProLogic. ProLogic is the actual programmer that works with teams to be able to download this into our system. It's already with us. And what is that gonna do? That is going to allow every single campus administration to be able to view his or her staff immediately and know exactly what certification he or she possesses, whether it's still valid, has it been expired? And these are things that, obviously, in the past, we would look into, into the folder. But we're beginning the process with all, and we're trying to eliminate the, the manual input because we're, we're doing it one time when they get hired, and now it's, it's in the transition phase. So, that is one of the examples that, that, you know, as you go through your, your binder, and, and you read the comments that we have on there, of what we have in place right now. So, I, I don't know if you have any questions, but obviously, the whole intent here was, in the very front, you have the actual copy of the, my, my table of different. And so, we try to put the page number that it refers to on the actual forensic audit, so you can refer back to that and see our response and see the plan of actions that we're looking at doing as a dist, as a district.
Great, okay, so we'll take this back, read through it, and maybe call a special board meeting to go into it.
Sure, yes, yes.
I think that this is a whole meeting in itself.
Yes, yes, yeah, but you've got it now, and everybody has exactly the same thing. And notice that on here, I put draft on there because, obviously, we're, we're still pending, doing some research on certain items.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Cancel report only?
Yes, sir.
Report on Project Rice?
Item, or, or number four, report on Project Rice for Rivas Elementary and 3D. This, this particular tab that you have, and again, whenever there's grant money, there's always gonna be quite a bit of work behind the scenes. Not that it's gonna be free. But nevertheless, in this case, the, the, our, our staff is really taking it upon themselves to, to go on and beyond because we didn't wanna eliminate anyone from participating in this. So, this particular incentive, it really is what it is, is incentive pay. The only two campuses that qualified from our district were 3D and Rivas. And you see in your little packet in there, the total numbers of campuses that are, that are, that are, that were able to qualify and were accepted by, by the district in behalf of Region One. So, in Donna ISD, you see that 3D Academy and MR Rivas Elementary. They were the only two. Even if we wanna say, well, how about Campus A or Campus B? It was just them two. The one right above is Brownsville ISD, with as many schools as they have. They only had Porter Early College High School that qualified and Falk Middle School. And so, you have the list there before you. In essence, this is a report that we're bringing to you because Region One is doing all the legwork from their part. But we wanted to let you know so that in case the word gets out there, well, how come 3D and, and Rivas is getting in? What about us? Well, now here's the answer to that. Later on, you're gonna see that Rivas qualifies for yet another incentive packet similar to this. And we'll go into detail on that because that is a whole separate scenario. So, this is what this report entails for you. And, and again, it's, it's pretty written out because, as I mentioned, Region One is the, the care, the keeper for all those districts that you see there before you in the, on page seven.
This is separate program from the one later in the agenda.
Yes, correct. This is a totally separate in the part, okay?
But it's similar in a lot of ways.
Similar in that it's incentive pay. And the incentive pay comes with performance. And performance comes with the outcome of the state assessment.
And, and who are the reviewers for each of the camp, each of these two campuses?
Uh, this one is under the, Mr. Rana, is the one that's overseeing this from our district. And he's working in conjunction with HR and payroll because, obviously, all three need to be in sync. I don't know if our representative from Region One is here. I know, who's the representative? Just to stand up and say hello.
Hello.
Thank you for being here. I know that, so, we're, we're on target thus far in making the report, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I was just looking at, that's why I was curious. It, it feels like the, the reviewers that would actually do the classroom observations play an important role in this, obviously. And so, that's why I was just curious. Is that the campus principal for this program that is the reviewer?
Mr. Rana?
In reality, the, the way you worked the model, it's already set up for the sixteen districts that are participating in thirty-one campuses. It's set up as a grant that was awarded by the newest department of pay. As far as how the system works and how they wanna determine the incentive is going to be based on a formula that the center, Education Service Center has already established based on contract with different entities to make sure that the payout is accurate. So, there are very, a lot of different metrics that are used, it's quite sophisticated. But it involves multiple evaluators, multiple observations.
Okay, so it's.
Performance of the students. So, you, you'll have a, a, a complete model there.
Yes, I see the percentage here, fifty. So, value-based model, which I understand is a formula, school, school-wide student performance, twenty percent, and classroom performance. That's why I was just curious if, since, since the four observations per year are, are is what's making up the fifty percent. It, we haven't determined yet who is doing those observations, is that right?
Yeah. That is, the, the four observation makes fifty percent.
Right.
And those observation are more on a coaching capacity because we do have also a master teacher that participates on those observations. Which is, that's a supervisory capacity, but more like supporting teachers. The objective is to increase educator.
I was just wondering who is actually rating people from the observations? Is it from someone from Region One, or is it someone on the campus?
Ma'am, could you approach the, the podium? Could you approach the podium and talk to us, or?
This is to the T, T test. Therefore, we are going to, the principal is going to observe at the CS. So, it's a T-test process.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay. Which, which has already been going on.
Yes, yes.
In the district previously.
Yes.
Now it's just attaching incentive pay.
To the.
And then we just approved a list of T-tests of, of evaluators.
Appraisers, yes.
Appraisers, okay. That's, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
How are we, how are the, how are the classroom teachers doing up to now? Can you see that there's the motivation and the kids? And I know that you got first place in attendance, so, obviously, you know, that's gotta play, play a, a role. You know, you get the kids to come to, to school, they'll learn, you know? But, I mean, is it, do we, are we seeing notable progress already?
As you said, like, the tendency is the big.
Right.
So, the students are coming, and that's a first step. Like, a student need to be in the classroom in order to make a difference. So, the students are in place, the teacher are teaching effectively, and things are happening.
What about teacher, teacher attendance? Mr. Navarro, teacher attendance? Your teacher attendance, is that up also?
Yes, sir. This year it is, yeah. But that's also gonna be part of the presentation I'm gonna give.
Oh, okay.
That, that is gonna be part of that.
Oh, okay. We're jumping ahead, we're jumping ahead, I guess.
Yeah, this hasn't started yet. This one hasn't started. This is for this year.
Thank you.
Um, the only other request I would have is, I would love, because there's a list of, of schools across the Education Service Center area, I would just love to be involved in any learnings that the Service Center is putting out around what you guys are learning about incentive pay across the region. So, not now, I'm just saying, invite us to any kind of like, you know.
And I appreciate that you mentioned, the only reason I wanna address it because I wanna invite the board, and I'm, I'm new, of course, addressing these audience. But in reality, this entire project is based on a human capital management concept, which is a concept that is used in the business world, but it really is, how do you bring the talent that you need? How do you develop that talent? And how do you make sure that you have the best qualified people? So, we are hoping that we will start educating, not educating, but our education and community as well, our superintendent, to see, these are only two campuses that you have. But hoping you are ready as a district, start looking at sustainability and the items from this grant that are not gonna cost you any money. For example, you've recruited your selection practices, your interviewing practices, practices. When do you hire, how do you hire? So, yes, I, I just wanna make sure that, that, I let you know that we appreciate the partnership. There's a lot to do in the project, it's a high-year grant, but we're very, very excited what we have to offer. Those two campuses have multiple opportunities for professional development, not only the opportunity to attend, but we do pay us stipends every time they attend outside contract hours.
Awesome.
Which is interesting for us. I mean, very, very important for us to recognize their efforts to be on a Saturday learning. And they're giving away their time, and that, of course, that's gonna have an impact on them.
I'd just love to learn alongside Region One.
And, and I know, I mean, I just came because I wanna commend you and, and for the question. Yes, by all means, we're very excited to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. President and trustees, that was a report only.
Let's go on the consent agenda.
Mr. President and trustees, under consent agenda, the first item is accounts payable. That, that was sent to you electronically earlier. And so, if you have any questions, we do have Ms. Martinez here to address that.
Any questions on their accounts payable?
I have a question on, on page five. There is, I'm just kinda curious, we got a $7,000 expenditure for school board trustee. How did that amount to $7,000?
That was actually for all the training that I think all the board members attended. And that includes the hotel stay and travel, everything.
For, for back in, oh, this is back in the month of June.
Yes, sir. It was.
And that amounted to $7,000.
Yes, sir.
With hotel and.
The hotel and, and everything.
But it was, that wasn't just Mrs. Watt. Why isn't her name only?
Yeah, I did question.
It wasn't just her.
No, no, no.
That's everyone that attended, and of course, it's because it's American Express card.
It's the Summer Leadership Institute.
Yeah, that's the one.
And I think that's the one that, Mr. Billman, I think you attended this one.
Yes, I did, correct. And I just.
I was there. Dr. Mary.
I did.
You didn't spend money in that line.
A lot of money there for that conference.
Yes, it was.
But it was a good conference. It was.
Again, uh, Mr. Board President, I'd like us to have a workshop because I'm still seeing a lot of expenditures on all these copy machines, printers and what have you throughout, uh, the last couple of months. We need to really zero in on this and, uh, make time for a workshop because again, there's just a tremendous amount of expenditures in that, that we need to, uh, get more knowledge on what's going on here. If we can find the time, sir, to make, make time for that.
We'll try to do that in conjunction with one of the, uh, one of the grievances that we need to hear.
Okay.
Uh, page ninety-six, um, last three digits, three, two, seven. Uh, we're still continuing to pay these attorneys for the amount of five thousand one hundred and seven. I ca- I thought we were done and yet it's still showing up.
I believe that was the final split, is that correct, Ms. Martinez?
Yes, sir. The file, it was in September.
Page ninety.
Ninety-six?
The Purdue, uh, yes.
And, and if you recall, Mr. Billman, the, uh, transition called for a six-month.
Correct.
That, this should be the last one.
This is the last one.
Yes, sir.
That's why it's even a smaller.
Glad to see that. Okay. I have no further questions on my end. Thank you.
Is there any further questions to be asked?
No questions, then then we'll go to number two.
Yeah, if there's, if there's no questions, um, we're gonna move on to item number two, investment report. No, it's a consent agenda.
We go to three.
And on, uh, Mr. Castillo, you got anything on investment report?
I'll just, just note it there.
Okay, then we have, uh, the financial statement, number three, uh, the district's financial and child nutrition program, uh, September, uh, twenty seventeen. Are there any questions on that? Okay, number five or four, the tax collection. And we had a report by Mr. Varela a little while ago. Any questions on that? And number five, uh, is approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting, September twelfth, twenty seventeen, and special board meeting of twenty nineteen. Are there any, uh, questions on any of those two board minutes?
Nope.
There are no questions, Mr. President Trustees, the administration recommends approval of consented item.
The recommendation to approve?
I know.
Motion by Ms. Watts?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robina. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to district operations, uh, Mr. President Trustees, D O one, Architects Monthly Report. Uh, Rofa Status Report on all of Don I Z's current facility projects. And for that, we have Mr. Figueroa, Mr. Figueroa to make the report.
Thank you very much. Um, just wanna give you an update on the, uh, excuse me, I need to get.
Technology, please.
Sorry about that. Uh, uh, one of the items we have here is item D zero four, that's the Solis Middle School. And that project is, uh, as I reported before, it was virtually complete when I reported the last time. It has been completed, punch list items have been completed. We've issued, uh, this pay application, which is a final payout. Uh, we also have requested and they submitted the change order to credit back the forty thousand dollars on the allowance. So that will reduce the contract amount by that much, uh, for five, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand minus the forty thousand.
So we actually had money left over?
Yes, forty thousand dollars, came down to four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. So that will be issued, um, actually, we already have it ready. I believe you all have, uh, uh, the, uh, original copy, but we're gonna get the contractor to come in and sign that and the substantial completion form as well. And of course, the change order. So once that's done, uh, and we get the closing documents, which is basically on this project, the submittal package and the, uh, and the release of leans, so we'll get that by Friday, probably wrap up the project.
Have we done a walkthrough, uh, the last couple of days it's been raining?
Yeah, oh, yes, I should mention that every time it rains, there's several rains, uh, we've, we've, we've called Mr. Quay out to find out and, and luckily, they've already looked at it before, before I called and, uh, they've been out there, Mr. Quay's been out there. Uh, they haven't reported any leaks, even as of today, there weren't any leaks either. There are a couple of, uh, downspots that we're having to relocate now that we see where, where water's really falling in some of the sidewalks. And the contractor's doing that at no additional charge. Uh, so those, I think there's two more downspots that are gonna be relocating in the next couple of days. You have any other questions on, on that? If not, uh, I also wanted to give you an update, uh, we've had, uh, with the, uh, building committee, we've had three visits already, or three meetings already to talk about the proposed, uh, classroom wing addition over at Todd. And, uh, we've looked at several, several options, actually. Uh, you can see here, we've looked at, uh, the, I'm gonna give you several here, the, the area on the south of the school, which is along Wood Avenue. This is Salinas Avenue down over on this bottom side. North would be to the left. We've also looked at the area between the, uh, the M Building and the, and the Science Building. And then this area back over in the back where the, um, where the open area is over in the top corner by the, um, to the, to the west, to east of the M Building. And then also, we looked over at the parking lot where it's a student drop, or a bus drop-off area as well. Of all the different areas we looked at, because we wanted to be sure that we looked at all the areas that, that had possible locations, we all, we all felt that the, uh, classroom wing to the south was probably the most appropriate. Uh, not only because of the size of the area that's there, uh, but also because it also gives us, gives us the least probability of disruption of the school during the school year, during, during the, uh, student, uh, uh, class time. And so we think that is the best area. We also looked at a, a consider, we considered a, a single, uh, loaded corridor in that area, uh, with twelve classrooms. And, uh, then we came back with a double loaded corridor where you have the classrooms on each side of the hallway. And, uh, we came up with different options of doing the twelve classrooms, maybe up to seventeen or eighteen classrooms. So we're looking at a budget somewhere between, depending on what you end up going with, between three and four million dollars. We do know that there's, um, there's some utilities that we need to extend, especially between the buildings because there's water coming into this area here. Also, between the buildings there, we'll have to collect that water, probably with inlets, a drainage collection system and take it out of the site. Uh, we've also looked at, uh, the possibility of adding more parking, and this is one of the options. Uh, we've also, let's see what I can. We've also looked at this option here, uh, where we've even thought about putting the, um, the life skills, uh, spaces, uh, classrooms are right about here right now in the corner of the existing building. And we're thinking of putting those into the new building and giving them new, um, new facilities in the new building and converting the existing back to what they were before, which, uh, was two classrooms. Uh, the size is there because that's what they were before. Uh, and then we looked at the possibility of doing some kind of a loop here for, for drop-off area for these children. Uh, but I think ultimately, we decided to go ahead and do the previous layout with the life skills over on this end here and allowing the, the existing drop-off area to be able to drop those children. Put a covered walkway here, uh, extending to the, uh, to the new building and then also extending over to the, connecting to the existing canopies. Uh, we've also looked at the possibility of doing a, an additional driveway back into here and tying into this, this entry or curb cut that's here that, and we're investigating that right now with, with the city and with the state on Salinas to see, uh, what kind of curb cut, curb cuts we can do. Um, uh, we have one there, but I think, uh, at the time, they only authorized us to do that as a, as an exit or an entry, uh, not, not both because of the congestion that could happen there. Uh, but once we figure that out and once we know exactly which way we go, we'll, we'll give you some more definitive answers on that. Uh, but we are making initial contact with both the city and with the highway department. So that's where we're at right now. It's about a twenty thousand square foot addition. Uh, it'll have the classrooms, it'll have bathrooms, it'll have an office, some storage areas, and of course, mechanical rooms. Anybody, uh, Mr. Guerrero, Mr. Sincedo, I know y'all, and, and been on the committee, have been in attendance. If y'all have any questions or anything you might like to add?
I know, one of the issues that we were looking at was, uh, making the life skills classroom a little bit more convenient. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, I think I've been looking at putting it on the southeast side. And, uh, you know, then, uh, doing like a loop around or some type of drop-off area there. And, uh, the teachers at Todd, uh, are very, very, uh, happy that we're, we're, we're doing something for their campus. And, uh, you know, I, I don't know whether, I just wanna say that, you know, I think that, that back two years ago when the bond issue was a, was a major issue, they've addressed the, uh, the need, the needs of this campus, you know? And, uh, that's one of the reasons why, uh, you know, that was one of our, 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 our issues, our priorities was, you know, hey, uh, this was identified two, three years ago, four years ago as a major issue for our, our children. And by adding these sixteen to eighteen classrooms, right? I mean, that's gonna relieve a lot of their, 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 their overcrowdedness. We're gonna eliminate all those, uh, or the majority, I think, of all, we're gonna get rid of all those portable buildings. So I think it's gonna be a, a, a win-win, uh, for the campus.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this eliminate the portables?
It's gonna eliminate almost every portable, yes, ma'am. Right, not all of them, but almost.
How is it gonna improve, um, because I, you know, it's, it's very difficult to drop off. When we used to, my son was at that campus, it's very difficult to get in and out. Is, is there any way to improve the flow of that traffic for any of the parents dropping them off? And I mean, you drop off at seven or six forty-five, it's okay, but after seven-ten, seven-fifteen, it's very difficult to get back.
Yes, you're, you're, you're right, and that's.
Lot of people have issues.
Been quite an extensive discussion about, about that and, uh, unfortunately, it's the congestion that's there. And that's what we're trying to figure out, what we can do with those curb cuts. So we can put in driveways or, or, you know, like, like right here, this driveway here to utilize it.
Is there any way to enlarge it because it's real hard to see? Do you don't have a handout, correct?
No, ma'am, I didn't bring a handout.
It's real hard to see.
I think that one of the things that we might wanna consider would be, uh, if we can do some type of corner effort with the city on, uh, Redskins Avenue, right? Redskins Avenue to maybe widen that a little bit, you know, and because that road right now, there's no drainage. Right now, it's already, uh, I was out there this afternoon and it's already, the, the ditch is non-existent. There, the, the water's already on the street, uh, the street's full of potholes.
Or if, if there's a way to exit out, you know, but Redskins Avenue ends, so there's no outlet. It's gate, it's closed off.
It's gotta loop back around, but that's what I.
Well, I mean, it's closed off. If, if that was a way to, for people to drop off kids and then exit around the, uh, the back. But it's, it's closed off. It's not open to the public. That'll alleviate a lot of congestion.
That's something that we certainly need to continue studying, once, once we decide how this works. We, we do, um, finding out more about what kind of curb cuts we can have is gonna be a major thing on how we can, what we can do to try to alleviate some of that.
It's kinda dangerous when you're driving or kids walking, it's really.
Yes.
If you've ever had to drive through there and drop kids off.
Yes, you got, you got a lot of traffic.
One of the problems that we have, and that's maybe something that, that we also need to address, uh, with the city of widening Redskins Avenue to, you know, uh, two-lane or three-lane. And a sidewalk.
Yeah. That's a good point. I know, one thing, uh, Doctor Mary and, 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 and the rest of the trustees, the city's got some plans in the future? And like anything else, you know, they've, they've got, uh, they've got it pegged. Uh, I don't recall the name of the street right offhand that is, uh, between McDonald's and Dairy Queen, goes, uh, east and west.
Avenue.
What is it?
Avenue.
Okay, avenue.
North Avenue.
And it goes east and west. They're gonna bring it from the east of the canal. They're gonna go over the canal, I think they're gonna put the canal on the ground eventually, and they're gonna bring it across from west to east. And then eventually, they're gonna widen that and they're gonna make a connection, uh, into the frontage road of Expressway eighty-three. So when they do that, that's gonna give us a, an avenue to really maximize Redskins Avenue and now get us a lane to go to the frontage because
Yeah.
either way, if we were to widen it, you still have the bottleneck coming into Eastwood Avenue by the baseball field.
Yeah.
That's gonna wrap it around the.
Right.
The title property, right?
Right, they're gonna, uh, exactly, to the north. Uh, they've got those plans and, and, you know, so hopefully by the time we get this thing going, Redskins Avenue is part of the city and part of the county as well. Similar to Eastwood Avenue.
How about back there behind the baseball field?
I believe that's county.
Back there?
Yes, sir. But I'll verify and that, that's what we checked last time.
Ah, I'm done with it, thank you.
Was there a particular area you wanted to look at?
Well, yeah, after we're done. I'm like squinting.
I think one of the, the.
For future.
Yes. We already had someone who worked with the county, right?
Yeah, maybe.
Ah, did you hear that?
No, I know.
Uh, the, the, this plant in here, is, is any of this, um, renovations to the actual current building?
No, ma'am, only, only where the life skills are now, converting those, that room into two classrooms.
Okay, so the four million is really just to build the wing?
Yes, and, uh, some parking and we know there's gonna be some onsite utilities.
That's gonna increase the traffic too. I have a question. Let's say you, you proceed, or we proceed in the future with that, what about the old part? Let's say years from down, is that, would that be able to be demolished and a new, um, middle school built?
If you plan to do that, yes, ma'am. Uh, I think one of the, one of the concerns that y'all have here is also the amount of playground area. And we've discussed that as well, where the portables are now. Uh, where the portables are now, uh, you can actually, let's see what I can. Where the portables are now, that field, you can actually field, uh, you can almost fit a, a practice football field in that area. But, but it comes right up to the edge of the existing parking lot. I know we've had discussions of possibility of, of redoing the parking somewhere else and using that to give the students more, more playground area or more, uh, uh, practice areas. Uh, adding or, or demolishing, of course, that's also always possible. Um, and that's something that could be worked in.
No, I'm talking about the, the main building.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Once that's demolished, there's some things that could be done. Because really, you got a lot of campus and there are actually some unused areas.
It's just patches here and there.
Yes, it could be, uh, better placed in, in a, in a single building instead of different, separate buildings.
Okay. So I don't know if that answered my question. If.
Yes, the answer's yes.
Yes, so it could be, uh, added on or, or meshed together, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, the only, I think, our main concern has been to accommodate our students, you know? And I think that's the major concern. How can we accommodate the most amount of students for the least amount of money? And, uh, this is the plan that we're looking at right now, you know?
Right now. Now, I just wanna make sure it's in the future. We don't wanna spend four million in three years, four years, oh, we should've done it this way. And now we have to, you know, it's like, I'm misspending four million dollars.
Sure. And, and again.
At the next, uh, at the next, uh, meeting that we have, sir, I, I invite, uh, somebody else to go. I've been at all the meetings, Mr. Guerrero's been at all the meetings. And, uh, I know Mr. Billman has not been able to attend any. So if that's gonna be the case, then I need somebody else to show up so we can have more input. Because if I'm, uh, you know, I've, this is basically like, okay, only, only two people are making this decision? And that's not what it is. The campus has a, a, a group. They've got about ten, fifteen people there. And every time we bring up something, they shoot it down.
Yeah.
You know, they, no, 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 we don't like it that way. Nope, we want this room bigger. No, we want this bigger. So, uh, you know, we go out there and we spend about two, two, two hours, uh, hashing back and forth as to what, what needs to be done as far as the, the, the location. But, uh, you know, we, we do need another set of eyes out there. And if you can be there, um, or if you can't make it, you know, call somebody else, see if we can get somebody else over there.
Let me just verify on that date, Coach, uh, what do we have?
The seventeenth?
October the seventeenth, that's when the next, uh, construction committee's been set, which is a Tuesday. And I believe they begin at four. Four-thirty P M. October seventeenth, four-thirty P M.
Todd Library.
At Todd Middle School Library.
Uh, I would like to say, uh, Dr. Castillo, that, that I think we, that's the date we set. But I haven't quite gotten enough information from the city or text out. If anything changes, I'll have to let you know. I wanna be sure I have.
Keep us posted.
Enough information to give you.
Okay.
Again, what is, what? Again, one of, one of the things that I want everybody out there to know is that the construction of this, uh, addition or additional wing to Todd Middle School, it's coming out of the money that we already have originally. Originally, the, the, the main plan was raise a bond, you know, pass a bond, pass a bond, and build a new school. And the kids at Todd weren't even gonna benefit from it because the new school was gonna be out on the north side of town by Donna North. Okay, so we're trying to address the issue. Uh, for those of you who are teachers, who are administrators, you know, uh, one of the reasons that a raise was not passed is because we saw that there's an immediate need. If we had passed a, a, a ra- a raise for everybody, uh, the funding of this school would not have been possible. You know, so is it, you know, we were elected to to act in the best interest of our students, you know? Uh, you know, we had to forego the best interest of our staff, you know, and it's, it's, it was a real hard decision not to give raises to, to everybody, and everywhere we go, I mean, the rest of the board, you know, probably all gets the same, same question. Why aren't we getting a raise, and why aren't we getting a raise? Well, right now, you're seeing that we're gonna take, take the money that could've been used for those raises, and we're actually gonna have, uh, a new building, or in addition to a new building, where our kids are gonna have access to a brand-new classroom, brand-new bathroom facilities, which was one of the major issues over there. You know, uh, there, there were, these kids' bathrooms out there at Todd have been deplorable. Well, we're going to address that issue, you know, new bathrooms, uh, new wing, new, uh, water fountains, uh, new classrooms. So, you know, yeah, it was a hard decision to, to, to make, but we were here, we were elected to take care of the children of Donna first. And I think that this project is really
Yeah, we need to get back on track.
But people need to know, people need to know that that was, that this is where your money is going, guys. Okay, thank you.
As well said, Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. Mr. President, trustees, going on to D O two, discussion and possible action to approve ratification of fresh fruit and vegetable program, otherwise known as F F V P, grant award for the child nutrition department. For the school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, in, in your package, you do have, uh, the, this is for elementary schools only. It is thirteen elementaries, unfortunately, Casadesus was one that it was, that was not included. Uh, and again, we, we didn't have, we didn't have a C S O on that, that's what the, uh, the T D A, Texas Department of Agriculture came up with. Uh, and so we did discuss though with our child nutrition director to see if we could do something like that similar to Casadesus. I mean, sim- uh, to Casadesus Elementary, similar to the other thirteen, and the response for this year is that we could look at that, correct? Uh, and I believe right now, the fruits and vegetables they're getting, it's not daily, it's Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Three days a week, so we're gonna try to mimic that saying for, for this year, and hopefully we, we get all fourteen elementaries next year. So unless there's any other questions, administration recommends approval.
Sumoot.
Some motion by Mr. Guerrero, a second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
D O three, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action to approve the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen energy management plan to be paid from the designated fund balance for capital projects. Uh, as we, going back in retrospect, when the budget was initially approved, there were some funds that were earmarked specifically for projects. And that was, uh, one, the product that we just spoke about, the Todd Building. Two, the, the buses. Uh, three, the Semuza Alcada Auditorium. And, uh, four, the cargo vans that we were going to, that we are in the process of getting for H VAC. And lastly, was the H VAC projects district-wide. And so what you have here, we make it, we're make, make it intentional to say that it'll be from the designated fund balance of which was already approved, so that we'll know what we're looking at. And you see there, um, in, in your in your D O three, some of the things that we talked about now. In, in retrospect, we're looking at the, still zooming in on the H VAC. So the reason why we're bringing this to your attention, uh, trustees for action is so that we'll know that we want to go into the true H VAC and the hardware, for lack of better words. We discussed in a board review, and we, we did note that things such as, uh, the, the filters and so forth, that'll be, that is something that is part of the, uh, regular maintenance. So that, that is not gonna be considered, uh, from the designated funds, but we already have that, the budget for that. Okay, are there any questions?
So the five hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight is not all coming out of the designated fund?
Right, no, and, and, well, actually, it's all part of that, however, though, when you're looking at the filters at eighty thousand, we're not that was not part of the designated fund we're talking about.
It's a hundred and twenty thousand, Mr. Castillo.
Okay, and then we're also looking at, uh, in this, uh, in this report, you see that the six cargo vans were included as part of that. So it's, it's not necessarily all H VAC, so when you look at the hardcore, the hardware, which I referred to, that is what we're looking at. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question on the, on the air, the air handlers. Uh, basically, I've been told that that's gonna cost a little bit more than what was originally projected. So how much more and how, how are we gonna get there?
Let me call Mr. Gonzalez, cause you do have the, the details.
Good evening, Board. Made a few phone calls and I, uh, I started to do a little bit more, uh, research on these air handlers. And what these air handlers are, they're actually, uh, energy recovery units. And what these energy recovery units do is that they allow a certain amount of fresh air into your classrooms and then also extract some of that C O two. As you all know, we breathe that out. And I, I looked into it today, and it looks like it's gonna be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars each energy recovery unit. Now, is it a must-do right now? No. But these buildings are designed, have already been designed by engineers to have those energy recovery units. So therefore, in order to meet code, we would have to purchase those energy recovery units at some point in time.
How many are we looking at?
Looking at three. So it'd be about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Where, where are these located at?
They're on the roof.
No, 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 what campuses?
Sorry.
Fast forward.
Muñoz, Muñoz.
Which campuses?
Muñoz.
That was my fault, I should've been specific, which campus?
Sorry about that, guys.
No, not a problem.
A long day.
So they're all, they're all at Muñoz Elementary?
This is only Muñoz.
Well, the only one we're looking at is Muñoz.
Okay.
As you know, yeah, okay.
Okay, furthermore, with this, this, uh, this thing here going on with the Muñoz, I remember last year or the year before, we had a lot of issues with the, I think with these things.
That's correct.
Where they were all leaking, correcto?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And it was because they were where?
They were on the roof, sir.
That's why he said on the roof.
Right.
Cause he knows exactly where, where I'm gonna go with this. Now, is, is there any way that these things can be not mounted on the roof? So that we don't have those problems in the future, you know, is there any way that we can look at that or
Yes, sir.
Possibly, you know, try to get that
Inside.
Yeah, you know, because, uh, I don't want the same, you know, the, the big buckets under there.
Yes, sir.
That's about it, you know, um, can this be done in phases?
Yes, sir.
So we can do like one this year, maybe one next year, and one the following year?
That's correct.
It's just so that you guys will know that.
Why, why were we off so much on the estimate?
The estimate that I, uh, put, uh, on paper here was, it was an attempt to, to save money. And what I did is, uh, I did through our, through my past experiences, um, voted, uh, four rooftop units, that was like about twenty-five thousand dollars each for that, for that space, for that main, for that main hallway. And a lot of, a lot of individuals have complained about, uh, being stuffy and, uh, very uncomfortable in that, that main hallway. And that's one of the main reasons, uh, when, when we're lacking that E R U, which is the energy recovery unit, uh, the indoor quality is not as good.
So when do we find out about the placement of the unit or all these units? And not on the, on the roof, is there a platform you put it on the roof? Is there mounted on the side or what, what, I mean, they have to be above the building, correct?
Right, Dr. Mary, um, we would have to get engineering involved on that, uh, there's gonna be some extra work. Uh, because, uh, when these buildings were, were constructed, uh, it was made for those, uh, rooftop area or energy recovery units to be on, on the, on the roof. So we would have to
Well, when they, when they designed that, didn't they think about the E R Us and
They, they did, and the intent was to mount them on the roof.
But they didn't foresee a problem with the leaking?
No, ma'am, that was way before even I, I came on board, so I, I don't know.
But as far as engineers, I mean, they're engineers.
They should've known, yes.
Well, could've, should've.
But we, uh, we, we've redone the roofs since then, right?
Uh, we did Garza and I believe Singletary. Not sure about Muñoz. Muñoz has, yes.
Does Garza have the handlers up on top too?
Garza, no, they, they have been removed, Singletary's been removed, from what I understand.
And how do they handle it?
They don't have air handlers.
No, sir, we would have to make a, another hole and place, and, and put that, put that curve adjustment on there for, for those, for those, uh, E R Us. So that would be a good example, I guess, uh, Garza to place those energy recovery units off to the side somewhere.
So they don't have them right now?
No.
And how are they managing in the building?
And Muñoz is not?
Uh, they're not up to code, sir.
Not up to code, and the other ones, they're not up to code either?
No, cause they're not working, sir. They haven't worked for years, from what I understand.
For how many years?
I'm not sure, but it's, uh, it's, it, my understanding, uh, they've only worked for one full year and then that was, that was it.
What's a warranty on these units?
I would say about five years. One year labor, five years, uh, uh, parts.
Nothing's made for twenty years anymore?
If we ask for it. Yes, sir.
Why was, uh, last year, this was before any of us, uh, came on board? With that big energy grant that we had, we got a, what, a seven million dollar grant?
Seven point nine.
Or loan, whatever, okay, that, the E
The loan.
Energy loan.
Yes.
Okay, why was, why were, were these air handlers, do they not qualify for energy efficiency? And why couldn't we have used that money back then?
The plan, on the comprehensive plan that E three put out, uh, did include, um, these energy recovery units. Uh, the prior administration, uh, 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 went the other way as far as, uh, well, it's a, a sustainable, uh, project, so me- meaning that it'll be, it, uh, through the savings, we'll be able to pay off the loan.
Yeah, but, I mean, I, I think they went around all the district and replaced L E D, L E D bulbs. Why wasn't this air recovery system included in that big, you know? I think we could've done with replacing bulbs at a slower pace and replaced the, the big ticket items.
I know that we discussed, the committee discussed, um, to just go pure H VAC versus H VAC and L E D. And the consensus there was to go with a little bit of both, with the emphasis on L E Ds. Reason being, cause that is the, what we call low hanging fruit, we get the most out of our buck, get the most savings out of it. That's, that's the reason why the prime administration chose to go that route.
So this item, we're just approving the plan, right?
No.
We're just, no, we're approving the, the cost as well?
You're approving the, the fact that you're gonna spend money on that?
I'm sorry, I don't have enough information here, and I don't like what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
I'm just hearing little bits of stuff that you're giving, it sounds like you're not even, you're not even trying to inform us what exactly is needed. And obviously, we don't have that kind of time tonight to get informed. We need to meet on this, because you're asking for a lot of money, and I don't like what I'm hearing.
Okay.
What, what else, um, that's why I was a little, uh, I'm trying to like refocus here, that we're, we're approving this plus the cost that was proposed? Is that right, Mr. Sanz, that is, we're approving the estimated cost here?
Yes.
And is this the plan?
The plan is to replace or to repair the, uh, some of the condenser pumps. Um, repairing all the cooling towers.
But I think for the plan, I think, um, uh, to me, what I'm seeing here is campus, and then here are the things that need to be replaced, here's a cost estimate, but do we know for sure it's gonna cost as much? Or what about the phases, when are they gonna happen?
Let me just add on this, we, we, we don't have the specifics, trustees, and, and all of your comments are right on target. What you do have, and what we wanna be certain, is that the reason for this action item is just to be certain that whatever it is, after we get the specifics, that it's gonna come from the designated fund balance of which we already have out there. So that we were clear on that, and if you recall, when we were during the board review, we even looked at Run Elementary versus a Dona Elementary. Why would one have a two, two sixty-ton costing ninety thousand, and the other one that's two forty-ton costing ninety thousand? So for that matter, I would get the sixty ton, give me more, that, those are things. So I know that this was done, uh, just in general, but when the expenditure actually is gonna take place, it will come from the designated fund balance. That's really the main intent.
And it could probably be more than what we allocated, right?
Right, or it could be less.
But if it goes more, we're not going to, we're not gonna go for that.
You're gonna have to eliminate.
Right, and, and that's the whole intent of staying within the designated fund balance that was approved for this particular type of capital project.
So if, if I, if I may, if I may, uh, include this, on your list here, you notice that they're both face, uh, both face, so correct, like Donna North. Those are projects that need to happen, those are projects that need repair. Simple being, simple reason, uh, we'll talk pumps, for example, condensing pumps. We have two that are not working properly there, one is not even working, not even going on, not, not even on. And we've caught, we've, we've, we've cleaned them out, and what we found was metal about this, this wide in there, in, inside those strainers. That's not normal. That's all corrosion due to lack of chemicals, which I already have in place. I have that, I have that, that program in place with, with the other waters, okay? These particular, um, pieces of equipment have not been really maintained since the school opened. So all I'm trying to do here is try to get this back on track, because if, 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 if we don't have this, this equipment working, working to its, uh, optimal, we are going to lose out in the whole, the whole campus.
How long have you been in charge of our energy plan here? When you say this stuff hasn't been maintained or looked at?
Yes, so
Help me understand when you say that.
I, I will, sir. Um, back in March, uh, I was given the, the authorization to go ahead and oversee the A C and the electricians. Since then, we've been, we've been making some strides, we've been going, we've been improving. This has been going on way before I even came on board with the A C, uh, crew. This is something that unfortunately was neglected. Unfortunately, they, this is the cars that I'm, I'm dealt with, and I'm gonna fix this. Now, uh, if those pumps fail, that means the whole campus will not have A C. If those cooling towers fail, that means the whole campus won't have A C.
Who was in charge before you in March?
Sir, I did not have the authority or the authorization to, to direct any of our A C crew before March.
Who was there, or if not, to answer the question? Who was there before you?
Uh, okay, that would be Mr. Cantu.
So this is like maintenance ketchup?
That's correct, right now, what we're doing is reactive, which I, I don't like that word, but it's unfortunate, that's, that's the truth. So right now, we're doing a lot of deferred and reactive maintenance.
At the cost of four hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Right.
And that, that is the, uh,
I'm sorry?
The, that was for the air handlers at that one school, right? Okay, so
For this one only.
So basically, uh, you're not gonna be able to do those with So, basically, uh, you're not gonna be able to do those with the amount that is allocated to you based on this, right? You're not gonna be able to do those.
I will not, sir.
You're gonna have to skip those, you're gonna do the ones that, that, that we have approved.
The first ones are gonna be like Donna North, Run, Alame, Lenore. Those are the ones, uh, that are priority right now.
Okay, so that's, that, those will be done and then there'll be, there'll be something left over?
Uh, sure, hopefully, sir.
Hopefully, and then maybe we can at least fix one or two of those, uh, air handlers over there at, at Muñoz.
Again, that's not pressing, that's not really something that needs to get done right now, right this instant, but we will eventually have to get it done.
Correct.
For the ones at Muñoz.
Mr. Gar, uh, Gonzalez, you put down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for six cargo vans, okay? Uh, how, how dire is the need for that, for those vans?
Well, let, let me just put it this way, sir, um, I have six certified HVAC individuals. They're, 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 they're all partnered up. Uh, uh, so i- i- if we have, I'm sorry?
You only have three vehicles?
So, three vehicles with two certified individuals. You know, so I think we can cover more ground if we can split them up and then they can, they can go out to their, to their respective campuses.
So, basically, if, if we could go and, I mean, if, if worst case scenario, we bought three new vans. You, you could keep the three old vans and...
I think we already approved the, uh, the six?
The six, I think so, yes.
That was not them?
Already been approved.
Okay.
So, basically, what I, what I'd like to do is split up the AC crew and ha, uh, each, each of them have their own vans. Plus, give the, uh, the other three, um, compact vans to, to our electricians.
Oh, okay, so you do have a plan and...
Yes, sir, I do.
Brenner?
Um, I think what I need here to just be more clear, and I, I, the information is in here, but it's just not clear, the actual line items. Um, like a clear budget essentially of like Donna North, condenser pumps, three, okay, thirteen. Like, I almost feel like I have to search through here to like interpret what it is.
Right, so...
So, like, do you have a li, is there a line item?
I, I, I don't have a line item, I, I, I should've made one, uh, um, I don't have a line, line item per se, but I can say that those pumps will cost a little over twelve thousand dollars, just to fix those.
So, that, uh, so for Donna North to replace four?
We're gonna place one, 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 uh, triple duty valve and then we're, we're gonna have the other three serviced, because of all the corrosion.
Okay, got it, okay.
Okay.
So, that's what, that's what it was a little bit hard for me to like, I'm trying to, I, I, I'm, it wasn't clear right away when I was reading through this, like, this and this is how much it costs, this and this is how much it costs, this is the total?
Yes.
You know, um...
I understand.
That would've been that helpful, um, I think it's in here, but it's hard to, you know, and I think that's where maybe, Mr. Vilman, you're, it, it feels like it's just not a lot of information for us to, a, and I think we're all in agreement, like, this is coming from the fund balance, we approved it. There's no question there. It's more of like, what exact, what, how does that, all that six hundred thousand dollars break down? Because I feel like what's the story here.
Okay, any other discussion?
Uh, one real quick question, Mr. Gonzalez, are, are you HVAC certified yourself, sir?
No, sir, I'm not.
So, I'm just kinda curious, when, when you're dealing with these HVAC, um, technicians, how do you know if they're not pulling a woolly over you? I mean, I feel like you need to be smarter than them.
I've done a lot of research, sir.
Well, I hope you are.
Yeah.
I mean, I hope you are smarter than them, because we're talking about some big bucks, three-phase equipment, chillers, towers.
Yes, sir.
You really gotta know your stuff. And I, them being certified, I hope they are, uh, maintaining their certification to keep up with all this new technology and this type of cooling system, but same time, I still feel you gotta be smarter than them guys, so that you see what's happening and predict and be proactive in, in, in this, because obviously, it's been put onto you of all this stuff that's been neglected for years. And again, it just goes without saying, here we go again. We're trying to make improvements and now it falls on us to try to figure this out. That's a lot of money.
Right, and I know that preventive maintenance is, is one, everybody does at their own, at their own homes, that's just common sense. And I, I think that that's one of the main things that, that need to be implemented here for this program. Um, prior to that, there's no evidence of that. All right, so I'm open to get that going.
So, you have a system, uh, in place where you're designating certain, uh, services to be done on a timely basis?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We've actually had, uh, we actually, we actually had, uh, little, uh, in services from that, with, with Mrs., Ron Kelly was involved as well.
Okay, it's time to move on, it's, it's, uh, Mr. Superintendent, what's your recommendation?
Mr. President, trustees, there was a lot of discussion here. I wanna read the actual, um, where the discussion is possible action to approve the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen energy management plan to be paid from the designated fund balance for capital projects. Administration recommends approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve? I mean, there's a recommendation to approve?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Dr. Mary, all in favor? All opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Okay, motion dies.
Thank you.
Okay, DO four?
DO four, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action on approval to initiate payment for TACO roofing for payment number four. Final application for the AP Solis Middle School Gymnasium re-roofing project paid from the designated fund balance for capital projects. And you had this presentation earlier, uh, administration recommends approval.
There's a recommendation to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Moving on to academic services, AS one, Mr. President, trustees, we have discussion and possible action on approval of memorandum of understanding between Donna and Penn School District, the HD, and South Texas and Penn School District, South Texas ISD, and the provision of half-day career and technology, CTE services for students with special needs. And, and this is something that, uh, we're very excited about, because if we hadn't had this in the past, um, we, we will be coordinating both high schools with South Texas ISD. It'll be an AM program and a PM program. Uh, the, the, uh, main individuals that will be, uh, helping here, or that we're gonna be assisting are gonna be your, your special ed students, special needs students. So, um, we, and they were very gracious enough to wait for us to this regular board meeting, October, uh, because they really want us to, to partake with, with them in this endeavor. So, does anyone have any questions? If not, administration recommends approval.
I will.
So, motion by Ms. Watts, second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Motion carries?
AS two, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action on approval of memorandum of agreement between Donna HD and Behavior Health Solutions of South Texas, BH SST. And this one, again, is something that we're looking for an MOU, uh, MOU, we've done this in the past, this is mostly for teachers to be able to get trained and also with them to turn around and give presentations to, to students that particularly have, uh, with alcohol or tobacco, whether the drug abuse and behavior health issues. Administration recommends approval, unless someone has a question.
Um, quick question, so which campuses participate or how does somebody raise their hand for this?
This will be, so, first of all, you have the OPC licensed professional counselors and even the regular counselors who can make a recommendation on particular students that they see. And so, having this MOU is gonna put, put us in, in, in connection with the Behavior Health Solutions, so they're able to come in on designated areas, designated times, to either give the one-one with the students that have that or being proactive, uh, with the students that, that may have had in the past, kinda like a recap.
Okay, so it's not a for sure thing, this evidence-based positive action curriculum?
And this one you're gonna see is for teachers, you're gonna see another one in a little bit that's gonna address the counselors and social workers.
Okay, so this isn't for sure?
They also provide presentations to the entire campus. We've got, uh, been approved, also maybe do, uh, drug-free presentations or drug-related presentations to most of the anics.
Yeah, I mean, this seems pretty significant, it says implemented twice per week for a minimum of thirty-minute sessions with a group size of eighteen to twenty-four.
Right, right.
Um, so, you know, okay, that's all I was wondering.
Administration recommends approval.
So, motion by Ms. Watts, second by Mr. Abila, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
AS three, uh, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action on approval of memorandum of agreement between Donna ISD and Behavior Health Solutions of South Texas, BH SST, counselors slash social workers. This is, uh, very similar to what we just approved a while ago, what you just approved, except this one specifically, uh, for the counselors and social workers. And you see that the group ratio, student ratio goes down to ten to twelve when it comes to them. So, uh, administration recommends approval unless you have a question.
Sub move.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Abila, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
AS four, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action on approval of adopt a highway program agreement. And this one is, uh, with regard to a truancy prevention program, Donna ISD truancy prevention program. They will do pickups four, uh, four times a year. This one is specifically for South FN four ninety-three, uh, point two miles, which will be south. And, uh, they will do one in January twenty eighteen, April, July, and October. So, um, if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
Yes, uh, hold on, I got a question. Is this gonna involve students being on the highway picking up this truck?
Yes, sir, we have that, but we do have escort, they have, they, they really, uh, in the, on the MOU, we actually...
We've done it before, haven't they?
Right, it talks about the details and we do have escorts front and back with the lights on, it's a, it's a, it's a, we have one here south and we have one north of Alberde as well, too.
All right, there was a, a motion by Mr. Abila to approve, second by Ms. Vena, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed?
I oppose.
Motion carries?
AS five, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action on approval of Blackboard incorporation and emergency and daily event notification system. This system will also include customized notices for attendance and library fee recovery programs, options to purchase with a one-year term or a two-year term. Uh, the reason why we put, put it in, in that order was because when we went for the, um, uh, our Qs, the, that was one thing that we asked for. And you see in your packet that it was three particular vendors, On Time, Telecom, Alert Media, and Blackboard. Blackboard is what used to be Alert prior to, and so we've been with that, that, that vendor. The system, the parents, the texting, the phone calls, uh, English and Spanish, and still at the end, it came out to, to be, uh, a better deal. So, we have two options, option one and option two. Option one would be twenty-six, nine eighty-three, twenty-five for Blackboard. Option two for a two-year would be twenty-three thousand, one twenty-eight. Um, that would be a difference in both your savings of seven thousand, seven hundred and nine and fifty cents. Uh, the others, even though like, uh, Alert Media, that's way, way high, and the one that is lower does not have the features that we are asking specifically for attendance. So, administration is recommending that we approve the two-year term and get a savings of seventy-seven hundred for our district.
So, the two-year term is, uh, twenty-six, nine eighty-three, okay, right?
No, the two-year will be twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, yeah.
Per year.
Per year, right. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, the savings of seventy-seven oh nine and fifty cents is because of the two-year.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve?
Blackboard for the two-year.
Sub move, second.
Got a motion by Dr. Mary, second?
Ms. Watts already said.
Watson already, outta here. Ms. Watts, second? All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
AS six, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action on approval of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen Texas Education Agency TA grant application for Twenty First Century, uh, Century Community Learning Center, Cycle Nine, Year Two, ACE Program, Grant NOGAM, uh, number one eight six nine five zero two four seven one one zero 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 eight. And keep in mind, this is year two of three for this particular Twenty First Century. Administration recommends approval.
So, motion by Ms. Watts to approve, second by Mr. Abila, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
How come a lot of these items can't be on consent agenda? Because these are things that you're doing on a yearly basis.
Uh, Mr. Vilman, that's a good point, we'll check with legal, I know we used to have that, but we wanna get more details with them. I think I checked with Mr. Farah at one time and, uh, we just need to re, 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 uh, revisit that.
We can do that emotion, just make all this, and Mr.... Yeah, it just seems like it's very, um, you know, we're just, these are stuff that, things that you have to do on a yearly basis and, you know, being put on consent, we just approve the entire things on consent instead of actually going on, going on each item.
Yes, sir.
And taking up so much time. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. AS seven, discussion and possible action on memorandum of understanding between Donna Independent School District, Donna ISD, and Walmart, Donna location for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Again, this is something that, uh, is very dear to us, uh, once again, this is for high school students that are in the VAC program, which is a vocational adjustment class. Uh, our students get to go over there and actually experience, uh, real-life scenarios in, in the working area, uh, obviously supervised with their, with their, uh, teachers or, and or instructional TAs. Administration recommends approval unless you have any questions.
Sub move.
So, motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. President, trustees, AS eight, discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding between Donna Independent School District, Donna ISD, and McDonald's, Donna location for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Again, very similar to what we just, uh, what you just approved, except this is now for the McDonald's location here in Donna for our vocational adjustment courses.
Make the motion, we approve.
Administration recommends approval.
There's a motion to approve by, by Mr. Abila?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
AS nine, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to solicit request for proposals, RFPs number zero nine one nine one seven dash three six five for online program that provides leveled readers, English and Spanish ebooks for students to read and listen, English and Spanish teacher lesson plans, evaluation materials slash component, tracking reports, and teacher training for resources and guided reading. Again, this is to go out for RFPs, so, uh, administration recommends approval.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any programs already that we've approved?
Yes, we do, ma'am, and the reason why we have to word it like this is because now we have to go out and get, uh, the three proposals.
Okay, no, but I mean, don't we have programs for reading already and, and other, uh...
We have the ICE station that we have and we have the Sing Spel Read, uh, for the pre-K through second, English and Spanish.
Okay.
Yes.
This is, this is not, this is not, uh, approving any money or anything, it's just just to go out for proposals?
No, no, I know it's for our EQ, but, I mean, if it comes back sixty, eighty thousand dollars, it's like...
You can say no.
Okay.
No, and this is...
There's so many programs we've...
The, uh, the, the budgets are already secured for this, but we have to go through the process.
All right, so there's a recommendation to approve? Do I have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abila, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. President and trustees, AS ten, discussion and possible action on approval of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen Emir Rivas Elementary Title One Priority Schools, TIPS Incentive Pay Plan Arrangements. As we mentioned earlier, when, uh, we were getting the report from Region One Incentive Program, this is the item that we're referring to. And I know we've got Mr. Ofelia Alvarez, Director for Test Evaluation, and the Campus Principal, Ms. Navarro, uh, from Rivas Elementary, to give you a very brief presentation, because it is really part of the actual grant that they received when we brought in the additional staff, uh, part of that was also the incentive pay.
But it's totally separate than RISE.
Right, totally separate, so they're gonna get another bang for, in terms of incentive.
Yes, good evening again.
Double bang at Reba.
Yes, good evening again. Today, we bring, uh, to you the Texas Title One Priority Grant, uh, well, school grant, uh, Pay Plan Agreement for Emir Rivas Elementary. This T-TIPS Incentive Pay Plan Agreement is composed of four parts, uh, which Ms. Rosalinda Navarro will be presenting to you at this time. And I'm gonna need help from technology, because we cannot open it.
Good evening. So, um, as you've heard, Rivas has been a very blessed campus to...
So, um, as you've heard, Rivas has been a very blessed campus to receive not only the Project Rice Grant, but also this TIPS Grant. And, uh, this was a grant that was awarded to, to Rivas. And, um, fortunately, we did make progress and we met our standards, but now we are under, um, my goodness, I just went blank. A priority grant, okay. So the first part that you see here is a ti, uh, the TIPS Incentive Core Teacher Pay Plan. And this is divided into three parts. Part one is instructional practices and professional development. Our teachers can get in this area one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And this means that core teachers reflect on their own strengths and professional learning needs, using this information to develop their personal improvement plan. Mr. Guerrero, you had mentioned about, uh, teacher attendance. Right now, we have ninety-nine point seven percent of our teachers have been, uh, present on our campus. So, uh, one of the parts that's in this part one is we wanna have ninety-eight percent attendance for our campus as far as teachers and staff members. So, um, that's part of this one. Um, and it's all qualifying, uh, core teachers and the resource teacher qualify for this amount. Part two is teacher observation, and that's up to one thousand two hundred and fifty. And this, uh, M. Rivas will identify and reward professional instructional staff who, in implementing the early intervention model, have increased student achievement and high perform, and have high performance ratings on T-Tests. All professional instructional staff will have four observations per year. And Rivas will utilize the following criteria, three announced observations for fifty minutes each, and one unannounced visit for twenty minutes each. And this section mirrors exactly as Project Rice, because we wanted to make sure that our teachers weren't doing anything. You know, we're trying to mesh these two grants together, so let's work together and let's see how we can make this easier for our teachers at the same time.
So it's four observations, not eight?
Right, exactly. And our part three, excuse me, let me see, right here. Uh, also for the core teachers is up to one thousand two hundred. And this will be based on, uh, the student classroom performance, and they'll be measured in the areas of reading, writing, math, and science. And the core teacher compensation pay will be based on reaching the targeted performance in the respective core areas. And as you can see in reading and writing, we have pre-K will be the circle assessment. In Kinder, ICE Station, also in first grade and second grade ICE Station, third, fourth, and fifth will be based on STAR. Uh, in the area of math, that will be third, fourth, and fifth grade, uh, core teachers teaching math. And in science, it'll be our fifth grade science teacher, okay? And of course, each core teacher will be submitting a binder with evidence at the end of the school year for review. And this review will be done by the campus leadership team. Now, this is the next part, and this is for, uh, support teachers. And this is gonna include our PPCD, Physical Education, Librarian, and Music. And they have the same, uh, criteria, instructional practices, and pro, uh, professional development. They can get a thousand dollars in this area. Uh, part two, teacher observations, the same thing, up to a thousand dollars. Again, with the binder, uh, as evidence.
So some of these teachers will be making up to, what, about eight, eight thousand dollars in the-
With both, yes, close to that. Mm-hmm, it's a good incentive. Um, for our instructional coaches, as you know with our TIPS Grant, we were able to hire five instructional coaches in certain areas, which are, of course, re, the language arts, math, and science. So this is for them. Um, part one, same thing as the core teachers and our support professionals, it's a thousand dollars. And part two, again, theirs is gonna be based on academic performance, because they're not gonna have the T-Test evaluation, but they will be, uh, as far as student performance in their respective area. And of course, at, uh, last but not least is our paraprofessional staff. Um, we have, uh, instructional practices and professional staff responsibilities, five hundred dollars. And all paraprofessional staff will support and assist in daily instruction. Paraprofessional staff will model ethical and respectful behavior, demonstrate integrity in all situations, and adhere to policies and procedures at their specific assignment. The qualifying positions include all instructional, uh, TAs, uh, support paraprofessional staff such as PPCD assistants, inclusion, PE, computer lab, and librarian assistant. And of course, each one will also be submitting a binder at the end of the school year for review. Do you all have any questions? Thank you very much.
This is an action item, Mr. President Trustees, administration recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Dr. Mary.
Oh, is that, am I too late to say something?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm in, I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Favor.
Mr. Billman?
In favor.
I'm in. Okay, motion carries.
AS eleven, Mr. President Trustees, discussion and possible action on the approval of the Carl D. Perkins Basic Formula Grant NOGAM number one eight four two zero 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 six one zero eight nine oh two in the amount of two hundred sixty-one, uh, thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Again, this is no other came in for the Carl D. Perkins. If there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
There's a recommendation to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Dr. Mary, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to business and finance, Mr. President Trustees, we have BF one, discussion and possible action to solicit request for proposals, RFP number zero-nine-two-nine-one-seven dash three-six-two for contracted services for psychological services for students with special needs. And again, this is just a request for proposals. Administration recommends approval.
So moved.
What, one question. So last board meeting, we approved the MOU with Buckner Star Program, and they provide, um, counseling, right? Um, so how, can you help me understand the difference between what Buckner and Family Services provide, the Star Program, and then what we're going out for our, our FFPs right now?
This one is gonna be specific to the student, uh, to the special needs student based on his or her ARD and their IEP, which is Individual Educational Plan. And the Buckner, you kinda get referred because you have possibly some, uh, home scenarios, you might be having some family issues, et cetera. That do not necessarily have to be special needs. This is specifically for special needs students, based on the ARD and IEP.
That was gonna be my question. What, what, uh, what do you mean by special needs?
Well, when I say special is a special needs student that has to have, he or she has an ARD, and if they require, uh, X amount of counseling based on the ARD, this is where they come into place. So you have your, you have multiple levels of special needs, or special needs student. You have your inclusion, then you have your, uh, your, what we refer to as the, uh, other, which could be, uh, hearing, or it could be side, non-intellectual. And then you have your life skills, which will be, uh, your, your more restrictive unit, okay?
Low functioning.
And he has severe and profound, and, and of course, severe and mild. Uh, and so we have to have someone in place in the event that the ARD, Admission Review Dismissal Committee, uh, says that student A or B in their IEP needs to have X amount of sessions.
But we wouldn't go to Buckner for that.
No, no, none of those, no, no. The Buckner, again, is, is open to all, based on the recommendation from the counselor or, or a teacher that sees them and they follow the chain.
Okay.
Okay, I think I had a motion from-
Mr. Abila.
Mr. Abila.
Mr. Abila?
Uh-huh.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Second by Mr. Billman, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Motion carries.
BF two, Mr. President Trustees, we already took care of that, uh, based on the change of the agenda, so we now go to BF three. Discussion and possible action to solicit request for proposals, RFP number zero-nine-one-nine-one-seven dash three-six-three to purchase toilet paper and hand towels to include the initial installation of all dispensers at all facilities at no charge to the district for the school year twenty seventeen twenty eighteen. And again, what we're asking is to go out for RFPs so that we can include everything that we just discussed there.
I move.
So a motion by Dr. Mary, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
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 Motion carries.
BF four, Mr. President Trustees, discussion and possible action to solicit request for proposal, RFP number zero-nine-one-nine-one-seven dash three-six-four for clothing items such as, but not limited to, uniform shirts, uniform pants, shoes, jackets, et cetera, miscellaneous clothing items for economically disadvantaged students. And again, we, we have to go out on this because we want to be able to get the, the best value, and this is the reason why we're gonna go out for RFPs. Administration recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Mr. Abila, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Motion carries.
BF five, Mr. President Trustees, we have discussion and possible action to approve vendors for the purchasing of computers, peripherals, printer, document cameras, tablets, and iPads district-wide for the school year twenty seventeen twenty eighteen. Um, the Technology Department along with the Purchasing Department requested to solicit quotes through national and state purchasing corporatives on August twenty seventeen, and which the ISD, you, the trustees approved. Uh, now we're bringing to you the actual recommendation of the, of the vendors that we're recommending for approval. And you have them there in your packet, uh, as we discussed in our board review, and now for the record, for all trustees. You have the primary and secondary vendors in the event that we wanna go to the, to the next one, that's why they're on that list. So administration recommends approval.
There's a recommendation to approve the vendors.
I move we approve.
So motion by Ms. Reyna.
Second.
Second by Ms. Watts.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Favor.
Opposed? Now vote in favor, motion carries. BF six.
BF six, Mr. President Trustees, discussion and possible action to approve a three-year renewal with PCM dash G for deep-free software and inside maintenance. In, in your, in your packet there, you have the three vendors. You have SHI, S-H-I, that was at twenty-six thousand three fifty-two. You have PCM dash G at twenty-five thousand seven ninety-seven point forty-five, and you have Veronix at twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-six. Um, administration is recommending that we go with, uh,
PMG.
PCM G, uh, for the three-year.
Mr. Superintendent, can you explain what this is, the deep-free software?
Yes, sir, this is a software that is, that is used in the campuses and is downloaded in the computers so that the teacher or the lab managers are able to monitor as best as we can. You know, we've got the students nowadays that they are pretty bright.
Yes.
So this is a software that allows them to see from their desktop whether someone goes into inappropriate site. Uh, and, and obviously, it's something that, and even then, mind you, it's not gonna be a hundred percent because, um, you've gotta be, you can't have somebody manning that twenty-four seven.
Do we have this in place right now?
Yes. Do we have, yes, so we, we're going forward because I remember that insight. So i- it is a form of being proactive, and that's why we're, we're renewing this.
So you're recommending which one?
P, uh, PC.
PCM G.
PCM G, PCM G.
It's the one that's listed there.
Right.
Oh, okay, I was looking at this paper here.
Okay, there's a recommendation to approve PCM G for three-year renewal.
Are we gonna be going out for bid for this?
We did.
Oh, this is, this is the one.
There's your, there's your three right there, the ones I mentioned.
Okay, sorry, getting late, you have to say like two times to me.
Yes, okay, sorry. So how much is, how much is that one? Cause I'm, I'm trying to, PCM G, is it deep freeze? Is that the one that's twenty-five?
Deep Freeze is one company.
Well, actually, that's, that's what it's called, that it does, that's the software.
Well, that's what I thought, deep freeze, PCM G's the-
Is the actual vendor, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And how much is that one? Cause I don't see it.
Oh, I don't know where it is.
Do you see here? About which one is it?
No.
It's on there.
It says deep freeze here, maintenance, maintenance.
There's a Virginia, the Virginia.
I had a question.
Is it twenty-five eight?
Yeah, I, I was just noticing that-
Veronix, three thousand one seven difference.
Yeah, but I was, I was just wondering like that PCM G, they're not charging us taxes on their bid. Now, when, when we get the actual product, are they gonna charge us taxes? They, they charge us taxes after, after the fact, that's gonna put them over the-
Yes.
And over here on, uh, I don't know, this is a discount. So there's no actual taxes on any of these items?
Your school district.
Yeah, it's not tenets.
So it was actually, actually this last one gave us a discount, that's why.
Yes.
I recommend, I mean, I, I know we approve.
Second that.
So motion by Ms. Reyna, second by Mr. Abila.
Favor.
All in favor?
In favor.
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 Motion carries. Anybody opposed?
BF seven, Mr. President Trustees, this, excuse me, discussion and possible action to approve out-of-state E-Rate Training. Uh, this is a, a required training that our personnel, representative from technology and the business office need to attend for the E-Rate. The three individuals that we're looking at attending this have approved would be Mr. David Chavez, Technology Director, Ms. Sandra Martinez, Business Office, and Purchasing Agent, Ms. Olga Noriega. This is something that, that is required so that we can continue with the E-Rate funding. And this time around, it will be in Charlotte, Charlotte, North Carolina, uh, October the twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. Administration recommends approval.
There's a recommendation to approve the three individuals for E-Rate Training.
I'm moving we approve.
A motion by Ms. Reyna, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
BF eight, Mr. President and Trustees, discussion and possible action to request for proposals, number zero-nine-one-nine-one-seven dash three-six-six for vehicle repairs and maintenance services for district-owned vehicles for the twenty seventeen twenty eighteen and the twenty eighteen twenty nineteen school years with a one-year option to renew. The rationale for this, again, trustees, is, as you all know, we're looking at, being certain that we try to get the best competitive price for everything. And instead of having open POs where, you know, particular vendor A or particular vendor B would know that they had possibly a fifteen hundred dollar open PO on a monthly basis without really knowing whether it was gonna be used, um, our, our individual will send the vehicles over there because we knew we had that. Well, again, taking the direction of our TA monitor as well as our business office, we have to be much more frugal with this. And so this time, when the RFPs go out there, we're gonna give a list of all vehicles that we have, including the hybrid units that we have with PD, and what year they are, what miles they have, et cetera, all the details they need, so that as a district, they're gonna say, you know what? We'll, we'll bid on this, and we'll bid on this, so that when it comes to whoever you approve, we'll know, and our staff will know who it is that we can go to. Uh, we, honestly, we've never had to do this, but this is the right direction that we're going, because we're gonna get the best value as a district for all vehicles. And so now-
This will include oil changes?
Well, it depends, uh, I mean, what, really, what we're looking at is the, the, the maintenance and the actual repairs, because we don't want just one or the other, we wanna do both. And so, we, what we're asking here is for the request for proposals, and we're gonna get much more specific with all the units that we have district-wide. Any questions on that? If not, administration recommends approval.
So moved.
I second.
So motion to approve by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
Motion carries.
BF nine, Mr. President Trustees, discussion and possible action to request for proposals, RFPs, uh, zero-nine-one-nine-one-seven dash three-six-seven for lawn care for Salazar, Buñuel, Singletary, and Adam Elementary Schools for the twenty seventeen twenty eighteen school year with one-year option to renew. This is that one item, whether, uh, General Counsel, that we can just table it or no action?
No action.
Do we need a motion for this to table or just-
Or you can leave Salazar in there.
To table, yes, or there's just no action? You want, cause you wanna bring it back to, to include Gar-
With a correction.
Well, no, I mean, it would kinda defeat the purpose of doing this because Salazar is not next to Singletary, so just no action there.
You can approve if you'd like Buñuel and Singletary.
No, we want the whole, we want the whole unit.
Okay, yeah.
We'll bring it back, so just no action. No action that, uh, trustees.
Alright. HR.
Moving on to Human Resources, HR one. Moving on to Human Resources, HR one, we have, now is an action item that we had earlier, discussion and possible action regarding proposed increase to hourly rate for DISD bus drivers in accordance with House Bill four eighty-three and Texas Local Government Code Section one eight zero point zero zero seven C. This is where we had a public hearing, this is where we discussed the whole intent and who, the whys and the whats. Administration recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Is the recommendation to approve, it's motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Mr. Avila, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, and, and according to what we, what you as trustee just approved, now we have HR two, discussion and possible action to amend 2017-2018 Compensation Plan to include a one-dollar hourly rate increase for district bus drivers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Avila, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor. In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And HR three, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to amend the 2017-2018 Compensation Plan to increase the beginning pay rate for bus drivers from twelve dollars per hour to thirteen dollars per hour.
I move.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Avila, second by Dr. Mary, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code Sections five five one, dot oh seven one, dot oh seven two, dot oh seven three, dot oh seven four, dot oh seven five, dot oh seven six, dot oh eight two, dot oh eight three, and dot oh eight four. The time is eight fifty-five. The time is ten forty-five. And we are back from executive session.
Mr. President and trustees, open session, letter A, discussion and possible action to approve Superintendent's Recommendation of Personnel. Administration recommends as approved in executive session.
Is the recommendation to approve?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Mary, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor. Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Letter B, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to approve district personnel?
No action.
No action. Letter C. Mr. President and trustees, discussion of possible action regarding proposed settlement of M. Soto. Administration recommends that discuss in executive session with the specifics that were noted.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And letter D, Mr. President and trustees, discussion and possible action to approve pending or contemplated litigation settlement matters and/or matters where the professional duty under the State Board requires private consultation with a school attorney, General Counsel?
No action.
No action.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Avila, second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening.